Call to order, the planning commission meeting for Pleasant Grove City, November 12th, 2015. Present are Commissioners Carden, Coombs, Richards, Armstrong, Commissioner Adams, Steele, Baptista, and Nyager. We're going to get started with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Carden and opening remarks from Commissioner Adams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this evening, we're grateful for the setting here and the opportunity to have to discuss issues pertaining to this great city, whether it be a great city or a great province, those that have leadership roles, if they might do well for the city, we're grateful to live in this wonderful area, afraid this meeting might go well, that we can be civil, cordial, and resolve the issues that are on the agenda. Grateful that you seem to know me, Jesus Christ, and I'm grateful.
I already mentioned this, but with our agenda for today, item number four, which is preliminary subdivision at approximately 600 South Apple Grove, when it's claimed that's the site hangout, site hangout in the states matter, is going to be continued indefinitely, so we're not going to be here and out this evening. Aside from that, Commissioners, you've all had a chance to kind of look over the agenda. Do we have a motion on the agenda approval?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
Give me a second.
Second.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Coombs and a second from Commissioner Adams on agenda approval on favor.
Aye.
Have you had a chance to look over the staff reports, Commissioners? Do you want to make a motion there?
I make the motion that we approve your staff reports.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Baptista, give me a second.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Steele on favor.
Aye.
Finally, before we get started, do we have, I understand we do have one, declaration of conflict or abstention from any Commissioner Commission members this evening?
Mr. Chair, I would like to recuse myself for item number six. Please do your personal relationship with yourself.
Okay, so Commissioner Coombs will refuse herself from item number six. So when that item comes up, we'll just have you sit in audience. Okay, so we'll move forward with item number one, which is a preliminary subdivision hearing, a public hearing for preliminary subdivision at 273 West, 2300 North in the Northfield neighborhood. Place. Okay, so this is a three lot subdivision that was proposed at 273 West, 2300 North. It's originally going to be, or was originally going to be a two lot subdivision, and because it was part of a parent property, it was illegally subdivided, meaning that it didn't go through the city process and was reported over the county. Because of that, we ended up having to add a third lot to it. So basically what this does is it rectifies the illegal subdivision, makes the lots buildable, because from a city standpoint, if it has been illegally subdivided, we can't take it through the process to go build it permanent. So 273 West, which is shown there in the kind of light green, and then the property to the south of that in the dark green, are two different zonings in this subdivision. So the tile property being an R120, which is a 20,000 square foot lot, and then the bottom being an RR, which is 21,780 acres, half acre. If you can go to the next slide. So I guess maybe, there we go. So there is an existing home on lot two there, lot one. It's to remain. The other properties, we're still figuring out about existing structures there on lot three, because that one was just added this last week. So for those of you who may be here for this item, we sent out two mailers, sent out one mailer that said it was going to be a two lot subdivision, and discovered the same day that it was actually going to be a three lot subdivision, so we sent another mailer. So apologies if there's any confusion there. So all the lots meet the minimum lot size, they exceed the either 20,000 square foot or 21,780 square foot requirement. The ability to remain there on lot one does meet the setbacks requirement.
This is lot 1 Royce?
Right, yeah. At least I continue. I'm like pointing with my fingers to have it. So as I said, we're not sure what the issue is with these existing structures. This one right here will likely have to be removed because it is a front yard setback. And then these other two, it depends on how old they are really. If they're predating the subdivision, then they should be okay. If they're not, then we're going to have to have those removed as well, because there's no primary building on that property. So I have talked to the property owner here on lot three, and he's going to work to see on those issues. So, but generally meets requirements of the code and staff report, there's no. Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions for Royce on this one? Okay, thank you, Royce. We'll open it up to public remarks or comments, is there anyone, actually, we'll open it up for the applicant, is applicant present?
Yes.
You want to come and stand at the podium, and we need your name and your address, your current address, and you just tell us whatever you need to tell us, if there's anything. Give you a little bit of time.
My name is Enrique Coelho, I live in 424 East, 760 North, England, New York. We bought this property 10, 12 years ago, and we just find out from the city that was illegally subordinated from the previous owner.
Okay.
So I spent a few thousand dollars to hire a supervisor and engineer, so I can subdivide my property, which is the front, the two lots, one and two. Number three belongs to Prescotts. And I just wanted to subdivide mine, so I can build a house or something else in that property.
Okay.
And they required me to do, to put the sewer on that old house, which is where we're doing it right now.
You've owned this one for 11 years, huh?
Yeah. But we've been, it's kind of weird, because we've been paying our property tax, and we just find out it's been, from the city, it's been illegally subordinated.
Because the county has a different record than the city?
Yeah, we went, we follow up with the paddle company that wanted to do the paperwork back then, and they say, they're not in business anymore.
Whoops. Okay.
So I kind of, I just, I just spent a thousand dollars to maybe something, which is a way to let it go into the city, to go into the city, so I can make things work. But we just have to find out what that problem.
Okay, just going to fix it. Okay, thank you. We may ask you to come back up. Well, Commissioners, do you have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we may ask you to step back up if we have anything else that comes up, but that will be, thank you. Now we'll open it up to, for any public remarks, is there anyone here from the public to address us on this one? Stand up here, give your name and your current address.
Dick Prescott, 2131 North 180, we're actually, that other big chunk of property just south of there.
Gotcha.
There's more of them.
Okay.
Well, I guess, that's what you're trying to set me up with, counts. So, anyway, my deal with this is, it's like Enrique, it's like, gee, you get a piece of ground or something, and it's like, then all of a sudden you find out there's a cog in the, a wrench in the cog, and it's like, gee, so what do we, you know, actually, what have we did? And then, you know, he wants to develop that, which I can totally understand that, but to put mine in the same subdivision, you know, down at the bottom, third at the bottom on the, on that map on this side is where my house is and stuff. And I've been through this stuff before, it's like, that place was built, I think, 41 years ago, and it was counted. And then some of the stuff, the system that, well, this shouldn't have been built here. I still got the same provisional plan, and it was counted, so what I'm saying to people is like, I don't have, that I don't want to, I mean, that's my, that's my totally retirement, you know, probably maybe never subdivided, but I want to be able to, when I decide to do it, it's like, I don't want to, okay, well, this is here, you could have done this, because this was this, and this was that way. So that's, that's my concern with it. And one thing is, geez, you look at that, you look at that land between me and Enrique, that should be squared up to make, I mean, there's only a few pieces of ground left in this city that ain't overdone by houses, and every square piece of dirt that they can get their hands on to try to build something on. Well, this piece, it's, you know, I wish the city council would come out there and see how many vans load of little kids, and little people walked up and down that street sidewalk, to look at, worked as donkeys, and a couple of goats I got out there, but it means the world to them. So I'm trying to save that part of, at least one part of, you know, basically the old, the old way how life used to be, the rest of it. So, and I'm not against, you know, subdividing, but if I get a totally written deal, down the road, somebody else gets an offer, oh, well, they shouldn't have done this, they shouldn't have done that. It's like, yeah, well, this, they shouldn't have done, they shouldn't have done this stuff, I don't know how it got past the city, I mean, I'm just out there on my little, tiny little piece of ground, and we went through total heck to get a wedding license to hold stuff, and a bunch of people is probably here to know what we went through, that's on just, and then when this comes up, it's like, oh, nope.
You know, I think, I think what we're doing here, and what you guys are doing here right now, is correcting the problem that was there before, and I think we're going to be left with a situation that's a lot better now than then.
Well, I, I, you know, I'm not, got the word or whatever, you know, it's like, I'm basically stuck in between the, something like.
This is the process to fix something that sounds like wasn't created by you or the previous, or the property owner?
Well, you know, it wasn't, and I, and I don't know exactly what happened out there, but some other company, some land people come in and bought that up, and then they, land brokers, and then they held it at Ivy Homes, or sold it at Ivy Home, or they sold it to somebody else, I can't remember, I couldn't follow all of that stuff. But this, Ellie Ryzer and stuff, when, when they had enough of this, this community, whatever, they, I told them before, said, if you ever sell out, I said, I want to buy some of this ground. So this is what, when Ivory came in and drove, rubbed the lines and stuff, that's where, well, okay, and then, geez, I was in Wyoming, something, they drew this up, and I was going to change that line, because at one time, I was going to buy that as a piece of ground, but they couldn't sell it or something, I don't know, they had some nephew, or there's in California, it was supposed to be some, you know, what happened up in California.
Are you good with it? If we do this and it corrects it, are you, it sounds like you're okay with it, if you just want it fixed?
Well, I want to square that ground.
Okay, that's a different process, and I think you could do that, but, you know, that's going to be, you come in, this isn't going to stop you from doing that.
Well, right.
So, I mean, you've got 2.4 acres, I'm sure you could do lots with it, look at your right of flooding as far as the zone change goes.
Well, it's not, it's not just that, it's not like I'm trying to be a land rapper or whatever, but in reality, I've, I've developed a little bit of ground and everything before the old days, and it's like, geez, to have, to have that lot come clear down there and be, be nothing but a wheat pile.
I see that, I, I mean, what we're here for today is, is just to look at what the engineering, you know, what he's had as far as engineering and surveying has been done, and it looks to me that.
Well, I haven't done anything to be that.
Yeah, right, and so what we have to do here is just look at what he's done and say.
And I totally understand.
So as long as you're, you know, I mean, if you want to, if you want to do anything else, then that's going to be a different trip, but as long as you're good with this one, then we'll move forward with it.
Well, I don't know what's going to say.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
I know there's, up in the old west, I've seen a bee hanging, or something, so like, no one. So, I probably need to talk to them to, about the square enough, the, that.
Yeah, that would be another trip, and you'd probably come in and meet with Royce or with Ken about that, and see if you can make it work the way you want it to work, between you and your neighbor, but this will solve his, his problem, of buying something he thought was what it was, from somebody that should have done it a little bit differently. So we're just trying to fix it, I think we're all trying to fix it, right?
He's in the same boat as me, my boat's just a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak to this one? Okay, we'll close the public comment, bring it back up here. Commissioners, how do you feel about this, any concerns or? Okay, does anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm sure the planning commission approved the request of Enrique and Alida Escobedo for a three lot preliminary subdivision flat called Malia Estates, flat A on property at approximately 273 West, 2300 North, and the R120, single family residential zone, and RR rural residential zone, and adopting the exhibit conditions and findings of this staff report, and it's modified by the conditions below, all final planning, engineering, and prior department requirements are met.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion from Commissioner Coombs and a second from Commissioner Richards, all in favor?
Aye.
So, and that's passed, we'll move on to agenda item number two, which is a public hearing for a very similar item.
I've got one more question.
Sure.
Can we keep going with improvements now, because we have, we hired a room?
Probably not, pretty close.
This is the preliminary plot approval, you need to get final plot approval at the city council, so.
Pretty close, almost there.
Yeah, we're, we're close, but there will need to be one additional meeting for final approval. If you'll contact me or Royce, we can let you know what date that will be, ready to go forward to the final here, to the city council.
Thank you, okay, so now on item number two, which is a rezone at 1419 North and 100 East in the Northfield subdivision. This is a public hearing to consider a request by Brent Bullitt for a rezone of approximately .324 acres from RR rural residential to R112, which is a single family residential with 12,000 square foot lots, property located at approximately 1419 North, 100 East in RR rural residential zone. That's a, the next slide. So basically this request is, is rezoning lot two, as a proposed subdivision, we'll talk about in a minute. So lot two, as it has been most recently submitted, includes all this striped area to be zoned to R112, so it's currently RR on the area up there. And so since property north, the property to the south, and west a little bit is RR, that's kind of the first planning issue that we have, is that we created an island of R112 on just one property. So either one connected to R112, or we want to rezone more than just the one property to R112. So it was unclear to me as to why this needed to be rezoned, it's exceeding the minimum lot size for a half acre, which is RR, that it's currently in. So there's, there's not a need from the lot size standpoint to rezone it. And so the second major thing is that, when I noticed it two weeks ago, my understanding was that we were going to be rezoning on .324 acres, that was what had been submitted in the plan, and we got some review comments back through engineering, and one of the issues was that the stem access needed to be included in that lot. And so that increased the size of the lot, so if we were to approve it, the .324 acre change, we create an island of R112 as well as, as not rezoning the entire parcel, just be part of it, and we're not sure necessarily what part that would be, I guess we could follow the old description, but it just seems kind of strange to rezone part of the parcel when you have the opportunity to rezone the whole thing, if that's what the applicant still decides to do. So, so based on how we recommend that this be continued, that the applicant has a chance to look at things, we'll continue indefinitely, so the applicant has a chance to look at things and find out what the exact requirements are, and determine that this is, that there's basically good reasoning for rezoning this. So one of the requirements in our code is that the applicant's basically show that this isn't, this is a good idea, this rezon is going to be beneficial to the city, and it's going to be able to further the general plan. So I said, from the standpoint that it does create an island of R112, and the property meets in an lot size for an RR, and a seat purpose to rezonate. So, are there any questions on this? Questions for Royce, Commissioner? Thank you. The applicant, would you like to step forward and address us on this one?
Be happy to.
When I came down to the city of Brooklyn, 1419 North 100. When I first came down to the city, I spoke to Royce about the zoning, and we talked about R112, and there was some discussion about whether or not I could include the stem, and he said he thought that that was, would not be included in the stem. So we did the zone, paid the money to have the zone changed. I'd withdraw that, because in fact, it is over the half acre, so there's no need to continue this. Because when we then got looking at it, and they wanted a legal description, surveyor included the stem in it, which moved that up above the requirement, so I left messages trying to find out for purposes of this need, if we needed to withdraw that, in the beginning response.
I said, we can help my request.
Withdraw my request, maybe I can get my money back too.
It sounds to me like there was a misunderstanding there, so we can, we can.
So I'd withdraw the zone request.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just go ahead and deny it. Withdraw, probably just withdraw completely.
Just, yeah, just withdraw it from the agenda, yeah, that's your request.
Let's pull this one from the agenda, the applicant's request.
Make a motion.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Chair, I move that we withdraw item number two from the agenda based on the applicant's request.
All second.
A motion from Commissioner Adams and a second from Commissioner Baptista, so time. All in favor?
Aye.
It's pulled, and we'll move on to the next one, which is item number three, preliminary subdivision at 1419 North and 100 East in the Northfield neighborhood, public hearing to consider request by Brent Bullitt for a two lot minor subdivision called Bullock Estates, consisting of approximately 1.2 acres on property located at approximately 1419 North, 100 East in the RR rural residential zone. Royce? Okay, so this one had a lot more indication on, because I was just confused on that last one, so we go to the next slide. So again, this is the same properties, this is up by the middle park. So an aerial property shows that we have this existing stem, and then the applicant's property here that's going to be cut off roughly an inch behind the existing accessory structure to create a second lot back here. So as has been discussed, this is zone RR, the lots, the proposed subdivision, minimum lot size. So we can see here, the zoning, again, if it was resolvable, kind of, in that situation. All right, so, excited for some of the issues, I noticed that there's another plot on the front page, and I don't know what happened, I guess we had some, some issues there. So anyway, if you can kind of scoot that over and line it up, mind. Basically, lot two, lot two back here is going to include this stem, so basically the stem is roughly here right now, the existing stem, so we'd be extending it out this way, creating a camera head for emergencies, for this is turned around. So again, it's pretty straightforward, we all need to do them on lot size, there's going to be a local area on these properties, we're putting setbacks on the property, existing buildings to remain also need the required setbacks for the RR zoning. So based on the fact that it does need to be covered, staff report is approved of the plot. Okay, any questions, any questions for the other commissioners? Thank you. Would the applicant like to step forward and address us?
Just a quick, no, I just, this is a lot that I'm creating for my son, concerned about having more of that, what he's doing. Understand that?
Yes.
He has four children.
But he's got an awesome wife.
I met, and I appreciate our sitting here, the sisters have given me this. I would just request that she could approve, and I appreciate it, see if we can start thinking.
Okay, thank you. We'll open this up to public, is anybody from the public here to address us on this matter? Go ahead, and we'll close that back down, and bring it back up here, Commissioners, do you have any?
Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move the planning commission approve the request of Brent Bullitt for two lot preliminary subdivision flat called Bullock Estates, flat A on property at approximately 1419 North, 100 East, in the, they say rural residential zone, which is different from what's in the staff reports on page three, because we had R112 from previous to that. So we just need to eliminate one of those RR rural residential zones in there, and adopt the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report.
Second.
So we've got, let's see, we've got a motion from Commissioner Richards and a second from Commissioner Coombs, all in.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
This item will go forward as a final plat to planning, to the city council on the 1st of December.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number five, which is a public hearing for a site plan at 1679 West State Street in Sam Light Lane subdivision. Public hearing to consider a request by Edward Allen for a site plan approval for a 12,000 square foot convenience store with an eight pump fuel station, operated 24 hours per day, seven days per week, selling beer, tobacco, also selling beer and tobacco, on the property located at approximately 1679 West State Street in the Grove commercial sales subdivision. Royce? Okay, so this is down off of State Street, right, as you're headed out of town, or into town, I guess. So in front of the new Walmart, New York Market, and so here's the site currently, so you can see there's a street here going into Walmart, so Walmart parking lot, and then there's an existing sign of the Walmart here, and then the rest of the parcels empty. So, this is.
So, this is the Grove Commercial Sales, which permits this type of use. So, it's going to be a gas station, community stores mentioned. So, here is a rendering of what was submitted to us after our discussion with the designer board. So, to point out kind of major changes. First of all, this is going to be a brown here where originally it was more of a, it was a bright red. So, the mountain design district that this is located in, the Grove Zone requires earth tones. So, we figure that this little bit of red is still okay. We want people to know that it's there and not camouflage into the background. But the applicants are very willing to work with us on making sure that we meet those aesthetic requirements. So, also timbers have been included here. These are originally just brick columns. So, this is going to be timber with stone on the bottom of these columns. Stone has also been added to the bottom of the building with a brick in the middle and then metal sheeting here. So, metal sheeting is one of the things that's required by the code. And there's also part of the original design of the building, so it works out. The designer board also requested that this, it's a manser group, is what they call this, maintained here on top. So, the manser group is going to match roughly the coloration of the cedar on the bottom. There's going to be a stain on that cedar wood to match. So, there's a lot of information here, but just kind of point out the major things. So, we have a landscape buffer here that goes around the building, around the site and another one here. So, the parking will be here and because of the size of the building, that's all the parking they need. You have a pedestrian access to the building and another pedestrian access out here, this sidewalk, which then connects to main pedestrian right away. So, over here on this side, I notice that the landscape, or the landscape buffer is not 25 feet the entire way. So, the issue with that is that there's a truck turnaround radius requirement here for you to be able to fill up the oil here or the gas. Trucks have to be able to come in and then pull it around. And having the landscape buffer here put it too close to the building is making it not possible to get the trucks in. And aside from shrinking the building down or moving the building around, we see that is a super beneficial thing versus averaging this landscaping buffer out. So, the code requires that they can have up to a five foot difference there and so it meets that. But then you also, the applicants also included this area here to increase the landscape buffer area so that we have an average total area of 25 square, 25 feet. So, if we can go to the next slide. So, this is the landscape plan. So, as you can see, we have some trees up front here and around kind of screen the site to generally create more of an attractive feel. There's berms that we placed out here, three foot high. And we have some more trees here where the parking and the back of the building, border of the Walmart parking lot. So, with the two entrances here, we left this one pretty wide again to be able to get trucks in there. And this one has some trees around, which is required by code. So, this has also included some bike parking, is required by the code. And it meets all the requirements for landscaping in the zone. So, we have more extensive landscaping requirements here than in other areas. So, overall, this closed development doesn't meet the intent of the ordinance down here in the Grove Zone. It's pretty straightforward, being such a small building. But we feel like, again, if there are any aesthetic changes that the planning commission would like to see that are different than what the designer board suggested as was included in the staff report, we'll hopefully make those recommendations. So, the intent of the approval process down there is just to allow the city council to make, to get the best kind of development they can.
So, any questions? Questions for Royce, commissioners? Is the applicant present?
Grant Dennis with Grand Park Faroe, address is 1430 West East Street, Northwest. I don't know if she's going to catch any of that stuff. Grant Dennis with Grand Park Faroe, address is 1430 West East Street, Street, Northwest, and that's Atlanta, Georgia. We're asking for site plan approval. And here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay. We have any questions? Any questions for the applicant? I don't think we have any. We might, depending on what the public says, we may have it back up, but then we could. We'll close that and open it back up to, I'll open it to the public. Is there anyone from the public that's here to make any comments on this item? We'll close our public comment portion and bring it back up here, commissioners. I think that's cool about this. It'd be pretty, a gas station.
I think you said there's a berm in the front that's on State Street, is that right?
Yeah, that's going to wrap around the entire, you can see contour lines there. Wrap around the side on the corner. So, three foot high berm. Is there any requirement as far as the size of trees? Yeah, so they need to be at least a two inch caliper standard and then they're around entrances in at three inch caliper. If it didn't seem to be seven feet high, I mean, we know those requirements.
Any other question? Has somebody prepared to make a motion on this one?
I'm with Commissioner Steele.
I move the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the request of Edward Allen for 0.97 acre development called Murphy Express in the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Subdistrict. Adopting exhibits, conditions and findings of the staff report. That's modified by the conditions below, filed by the planning and engineering fire department, fire engineers.
Motion for Commissioner Steele. Second from Commissioner Baptista. All in.
Alright.
Thank you.
This item is scheduled to be brought to the city council next Tuesday to be final approved.
So, we'll move on to item number six.
Mr. Jeff?
Yes. Yes. So, this will put Commissioner Nigga in as a replacement for Commissioner Coombs. Our alternate. This is a public hearing for a rezone at 90 North, 600 West in a Little Dead Mark subdivision. That's a public hearing to consider a request by J.D. Brisk for a rezone of approximately 0.95 acres, creating an overlay called Automobile Sales. And applying it to the, to property located in approximately 90 North and 600 West in the downtown village zone, downtown commercial subdistrict. Royce?
Okay. So, this is down about where State Street and Pleasant Grove Boulevard cross. So, we kind of consider that the entrance to the downtown area, that really is the primary entrance from the west. So, Pleasant Grove Boulevard being the largest road there. So, they use the property here. So, this is 600 West and Center Street. So, for those of you that are familiar, there are train tracks going right here. And then, you kind of make the bend right about there is where it meets State Street. So, anyway, so this is pretty, pretty close to, again, kind of gateway to the downtown area. So, 0.95 acres is what's been requested for a rezone. Again, we're not rezoning the base, we're putting an overlay on top of this. We're creating an overlay to put on top of it. So, we go to the next slide. Oh, sorry. So, to explain the situation, basically, the overlay is really simple. It would allow for automobile sales. So, as included in the staff report, the overlay would allow for just the one use number and it would just be 5511. We have some just standards for the size of the property. So, for example, the property needs to be at least a half an acre, which this is. We feel like for an automobile sales property, a half an acre is a pretty reasonable size. So, and then also it can only be applied in the downtown village zone. So, downtown village zone is more of a retail-based zone for at least the subdistrict, the commercial subdistrict. So, the original application for this was brought forward two months ago. Came forward and the applicant wanted to just add that to the list of limited uses. This was suggested by staff. And the city council was not willing to add automobile sales to the downtown, yeah, downtown commercial subdistrict. So, because of that, we've been making this overlay situation. And staff feels still the same as we did before. This is a good use for the property because of the underlying zone. So, because it's a downtown village zone, you know, it's intended for more retail sales and it's more intended for the types of uses that are going to allow for more aesthetic benefits. Whereas, commercial or automobile sales are not quite as aesthetically easy necessarily. So, we do allow those across the street to the south in the commercial sales zone, or the general commercials, let's say. We also allow them in our commercial sales zone as well, which is further south on State Street. So, there are areas in the city where it's possible. We just don't feel like the downtown village zone is the best place for this. So, creating an overlay that would allow for automobile sales in the downtown village zone isn't a whole lot of sense from a planning standpoint because what we're doing is creating an entire overlay to allow for one single use. So, because it is just one use, again, there's also the possibility that it would be applied to other parcels within the downtown village zone. And the council has very clearly said just recently that they don't want automobile sales in the downtown village zone. So, really effectively what we're going to be doing is we'd be creating the overlay and putting it on this parcel. So, we're creating the overlay just for this parcel, basically. Which we can do, but from a planning standpoint, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So, and of course, the applicant can speak to the situation that he's looking to do. My understanding is that he wants to improve the property, which we'd love to see. And just from a planning standpoint, feel that there are significant enough risks if something does go wrong. If the applicant's plan, then we have this property where automobile sales are allowed, kind of the gateway area to downtown. And that's not the intent of the underlying zone. So, from a general plan standpoint, we don't feel like that's a good idea. So, we recommend denial of creating the overlay and applying it to the property, just based on those reasons. So, are there any questions? Any questions for Royce?
Any questions?
Hi, Edward. Do you know what the city council was thinking about when they suggested that our option might be available? Were they thinking that there was a way to allow sales just on this particular parcel or?
No, I wasn't, I think they can speak to that.
Yes, from my understanding of the discussion that happened with city councils, that they felt that the approach of adding the use to the zone was not the good approach and that perhaps it was a better way that the applicant could come forward. And overlay was the one option that was suggested that the applicant could work with staff and can come forward with that. Part of the discussion was leaning towards the improvement of the property. And what we have learned in working with the applicant since the city council meeting is that the applicant is not willing or able at this time to make any improvements to the property until such time he is able to purchase it from the current owner. He would like to be able to add used auto car sales to the existing property and pretty much leave it the way it is, maybe clean it up a little bit, may possibly remove the fencing, do a couple other minor improvements to the land. But that until he was able to actually purchase the property, he would not be making any major improvements to meet a site plan approval with all the landscaping and everything that is otherwise required. So, I think we're not meeting that objective initially and there's really no guarantee that at any point in the future that will actually occur. And so, I think we need to kind of remove the idea of the property being improved as a reason for approving this. And just look at it overall, does it meet the criteria for the downtown village zone? And is it something that we ultimately want to see forever and always on that corner?
Any questions? At the point where, where if you end up owning this, would you have a huge problem with adjusting the zone? I mean, it isn't right across the street that approved sales or automobile sales are approved use?
It's an existing non-conforming use. So, I think the vision for both of those corners is that it would be a higher end commercial area gateway into downtown. And so, even though there are existing uses there that don't meet that, there is another vision for how those properties can develop.
That's good. Any other questions for Scott? Thank you, Royce. Is the applicant here? Let's step up and.
Fortunately, we mess you up. It's going to mess you up.
I bet there's another spot on the other side.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm having difficulty with not having a remote here.
Yes, my name is Steve Paul and I'm representing J.D. Brisk here for this. And I am the renter or the leaser that's there now. And I own Four Seasons Auto Repair, which is located there. And I've been there for four years.
What's your current address?
My home address is 652 North, 550 East in American Ford. Originally, when we wanted to do this, we came to the planning commission and presented, presented what we wanted to do. And the main objective, there was basically, if I recall, two main objectives. One was the flow from the Macy's area sidewalk flow going into the downtown area. And the second one, which was the main objective, was that the city commission had specifically zoned the downtown gateway to be businesses on a scale of one to 10, 10-type businesses in that area. And so, that is why we revoked down. The question was raised, are we against this because of the zone or is there other reasons? And it was said, because of the way the city commission had zoned it. So, when I met with the city commission, I presented my case there. And unfortunately, it was presented as changing the entire zone, which is not what we had in mind at all. And so, what I explained to the city commission is this piece of property is in a very unique situation than the rest of the zone. Are you able to get that up here or? If not, I'll try and.
Is this the power plant you're looking for?
Oh. Yes, that's it. So, I'm sure you're familiar, I've been there for four years. This is what it's looked like, sometimes worse, sometimes better. But this is what it's looked like for the last four years. And before then, it was probably somewhat worse than what that is right there. Can you go to the next slide? It's not coming up. Well, you can leave it there. The unique portion is that, as you can see on the right, that's Center Street. And there in front of me is 600 West. So, I am in the southwest corner of that zone. If you look right here, the freight length line tracks run the entire length of my 180 feet fence line that runs along Pleasant Grove Boulevard. One of the, what's unique about it is the freight train runs on there during business week, the Monday through Friday, three days a week, and it runs several times a day. And because of the crossings of, of the railroad across Center Street, which is the largest crossing of Pleasant Grove and across 600 West, the freight train actually blows his horn long enough to clear both intersections, the entire way through my property there. When that takes place. When that takes place, the train horn is so loud that if you're on the phone or talking to somebody, everything just has to stop till that train goes by. And my concern was, as long as that freight train is running there, this is never going to be a ten location. No business is going to put a million dollar building there and have that freight train running through there three days a week, several times a day, in the middle of their business conversations. And so my request, and according to the city council, is to request an overlaying just for that property because it is unique. And by bringing in Ross and Jim Wilson, who have been reputable used car dealers for forty years in Utah County, they're good, honest guys, you don't stay in business that long if you're not. And so what we wanted to do is to come in here and try the used cars and see if we can really make an improvement in the business there. And we have gotten rid of the renters that were in there with me, which cleared a lot of the junk out of there. And went in and we've gotten the weeds all down. And as a time crunch and good faith, we repainted the building. We've done a lot, and that's just in the last week of cleaning this up. And what our intentions are is if we're allowed to operate there and it is successful as a used car lot and repair shop, we want to purchase the property from J.D. And once we do that, a lot of this stuff that he's storing along this fence, all of his stuff over there would be gone. And at that point, we can go in there, do the improvements, we can put the asphalt in, the curb and gutter, the sidewalk, you know, make it look as good as we can. And like Ken said in the last meeting, the car lot would never be a ten. But it's going to take a very unique business to move into that location with that railroad to have a ten in there. And so what we would like to do is make it a seven or an eight, you know, as best we can, and improve that. I believe that with the new zone change, which J.D. wasn't even aware of, was quite upset when he found out that the zone had been changed, with the limitations that he has there, I think that he will continue to rent that out and grandfather it in as a repair shop after repair shop after repair shop has been done in the past until someone is willing to come in, put the money up, and build a ten next to a freight train. And when I talked to the railroad department, they said, "That's going to stay freight line for many, many years." They have no other way of servicing their customers up and down the tracks. And so my request is that you consider that. And if you allow us to go in there and do that, that allows us to get a little bit of a business history. I do have investors lined up that are willing to come in, put a lot of money into it. Ross and Jim have already started putting money into it. And this could be much, much nicer than what it is now or what it will be for a long time if we're not doing the car sales.
Any questions for applicant?
Excuse me. Three years, that's what you want to develop as a track, is that what you're saying?
Yes, we wanted to, we wanted to go in there and run it for three years and possibly sooner if it's quite successful, then we intend on buying it and doing the improvements before three years. And when Ken and I kind of discussed this in his office, we were even, did I lose you there? Sorry. We even talked about the possibility of having that in the contract of we give you three years and after that, three years, you have to start doing the improvements or you lose the car dealership, which I was willing to go along with because at that point, it's either do it or, you know, get with it or get out at that point. And after talking to the city attorney, they said that they can't do that. It's either got to be yes or no. And so I'm asking that you do yes, that we are going to, it's going to look much nicer immediately. It already has started to look much nicer. Or for the last six months, it's looked much nicer than what you see right there. And in that three-year period, if the investors are happy with it, we're going to purchase this, we're going to develop it, we'll redo the building, we'll use the earth tones. I've spent some time with Ken and we understand the vision that the city has for the downtown village. And I think it's a great idea, but I think it'd be a much better idea two hundred feet down the road where it's not in an industrial area with a railroad track as compared to where it's at. But I would like to make it as nice as I possibly can and keep the flow from the Macy's area all the way to the downtown area. Nice, pretty, and uniform so that it's, you're not coming across the street from Jake's Repair onto a dirt road and going up. And then where the new development is right behind me for the senior citizens development, you know, they got the nice sidewalks and whatnot. I would like to, whatever it is they come up to my property with from there up to the street, continue on with the same type of flow.
I have other questions for Ken. You said the train comes by how many times a day?
At least twice a day, three days a week, sometimes four. Some, they do a lot of testing with the city, so they'll put police cars all the way around that thing. And on those testing days, that train will cross probably twenty times on those testing days.
So there is development?
Correct, yes. And from what I understand from J.D., the developer that's putting that in has already commented on how much nicer our places look since I got rid of the other renters. And they had, quite frankly, it looked like a junkyard because they had wrecked vehicles, they were reconditioning, they had boats that they were renting and snowmobiles and C-Do's and all of that. It was supposed to be just along the fence line, nice, clean, new equipment. Before I knew it, it looked like a junkyard in there. So I basically had to get them out of there. It was killing my business. And I think this is something that would, with the used car sales, it would not only help my business, but would also make it much more beautiful there.
Any other questions for applicant? Thank you. Let's open this up for public remarks. Is there anybody here from the public that's here to address this item? Close that and bring it back up here. Well, help me wrap my head around this because we were here just a couple of months ago. What's different this time?
The overlay is there.
So the approach is different. The approach earlier was that let's just add auto sales as a permitted use in the downtown village zone.
In the whole zone and that was the reason we denied it because of?
So the city council asked us to approach this differently, so the best way we could come up with is to just create an overlay. Even though staff still does not support that request, that would be a different way of isolating that use.
It doesn't limit it to that owner. So it means that of that property, so ongoing.
We have to determine if that would change.
Ken, the three-year suggestion, that's not part of the proposal, correct? That was an idea, but it's not feasible.
The applicant's suggestion of what he thinks he can do, but nothing that we can tie him to.
I don't see how you can regulate that law. You define at a level of improvement that's different for each person, I think so.
It would have to meet the current requirement for the, you know, the architectural review. Just like the last edition did for its area, by the time he went ahead and did the improvement. But we can't sit there and say, "We have to get done with it in three years," so.
Right. Well, the thing is, by just adding the use, if he's not going to change the buildings, create new buildings, do other site improvements, then there wouldn't be anything to kick in the requirement for a site plan which would have all these improvement requirements. He's just asking that he'd be able to take the site as it is and add some cars for sale on it.
The only thing I forgot to mention in my presentation is that if we allow an overlay that allows for a specific use like this, we set a precedent for creating a positive use, always overlays for a new area. And so, you know, it's going to be really hard if we allow this, then somebody else comes in with something that's maybe more intensive, that's more impactful, and you say, "Well, do allow that," you know, what's the difference? If our basis is, well, it's going to be improved at some point.
And they grandfathered in, in their current zone, are they grandfathered in to do car sales and things like that?
No, not currently. Car repair.
The one across the street that does car sales, right?
No, it's vehicle repair as well. There's, they have, there's a parking lot.
Store stuff behind there.
Storage of vehicles that are being sold elsewhere.
The zone across Center Street that allows car sales, correct?
That's what the other ones is, because it's a two-man advantage zone.
Yes, solid state.
I'm not talking too much here, but I'm trying to think here. Okay, I know this isn't what it looks like right now. But what are we worried about here? Just the look of it, the look of selling cars on the corner there? I know we talked about this being a gateway, but either way, it's going to look like that, right?
For the moment, for the time being.
But like Ken said, if, again, if the property goes up for sale or if somebody wants to sell it, then you get the whole, put them there.
See, I think you've got, the current use is our repair points. If you allow some flexibility within the zone, then what we're going to end up with is we're going to end up with a profitable piece of property for the owner for an auto repair facility plus a auto sales place for a long, long time. That means maybe there's some improvement, but it, you know, we might be looking at another forty years with cars being repaired and sold on that corner. And we know that, I mean, this is, the use is changing. The piece right behind him just had, how many residences are in there? Hundred and sixty-two residences went in immediately behind. My guess, and it has some commercial on the front too, of that development. My guess is that that, I'm just guessing based on use, that that's going to change the way this feels. I mean, you've got office spaces that are right across the street. And I've lived on Center Street, my address is Center Street, for my house. And I have seen that train, I've lived there for thirteen years, I think now. I've seen the train once.
Does staff have a position on the train? Do we know?
I'm not sure how many times it actually goes, but my awareness is more in the realm of druthers. If it does come through a couple of times a day, three times a week, it's got to be on times when people aren't seeing it. There might be a couple of times where there is an impact on traffic or whatever, but it's very minimal as far as how often during the day and what kind of impact it has in that area. There are a lot of developments, you know, a lot of places that have built right up near railroad tracks and they could be just as nice as it could be. So I don't see this as having a real draw.
Right, you look up in Drake or Red Town, you've got Tracks that goes right, that's Tracks, it's a little different. Tracks goes right past everything, you've got Front Runner that goes right past everything in Lehigh. I mean, and it's a little bit.
Ultimately, these tracks are being planned for Tracks.
Right, that's the thing, is that I understand Tracks owns the right-of-way all the way to North Kent Boulevard on this track, right here. My guess is that that's going to be a very valuable piece of land in the next fifteen years, so. We've actually closed that down. Have you got a quick comment?
A quick comment is, one of the other things was, is if Pleasant Grove would like to have a track station there, which is one of the things that they were thinking, that maybe there would eventually be a track station there. And if Tracks is purchasing, if they decide that's where they want to go and that's where Pleasant Grove wants them to go, they're going to get it for a lot better deal from me as a repair shop and a car lot as compared to a professional building there. If they're going to pay that kind of money, they're going to go somewhere else. And so that's another thing in my favor. And as far as the train goes, I would like to invite you all to come down tomorrow between ten and twelve and listen to the train.
I've got a question for you, the applicant. Is this the owner of the property, J.D. is that his name?
Yes, J.D. Brisk, uh-huh.
Is he here tonight?
No, he's not.
Okay. So is he looking at, he's looking for to eventually sell this property in the near future, correct?
Yes, I have a lease agreement to buy.
Would it be you or somebody else?
Yes, however, he was upset because of what he thought he could get out of the property. But the downtown zoning would limit what buildings, what type of buildings could go in there. There would be a big limit. And with that train blasting through there, even if it is only six times a week or ten times a week, there's not a doctor or a dentist that's going to be wanting to be doing a procedure when that train goes off because you can be in the very back inside bathroom on the phone and you can't hear. You cannot communicate. There's not going to be a lawyer that wants to talk to, have a conference call with a judge and have that going on.
Appreciate that. We have to just bring it back here. We're supposed to have those remarks closed now. So anything else we want to say? Anybody prepared to make a motion at this point?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the request of J.D. Brisk for the creation of City Code Section ten dash thirteen C Automotive Sales Overlay and to apply the Automotive Sales Overlay to approximately zero point nine five acres located at approximately ninety north, six hundred west in the downtown village commercial subdivision.
Okay, the motion from Fisher, that's you, Stan? Do we have a second? Motion fails. Anybody else want to make another motion?
Let's wait until you have more discussion.
Okay.
I see, you know, I have to take your corner, I can see the points that, I'm sorry, what was your last name? Paul, Mr. Paul, you know, regarding, you know, the uses of it. You know, I think, in my opinion, I think it's a limited use, you know, as to what you can put there and be successful.
Especially at this point.
At this point. And, you know, and I think, you know, and I think if you had, if Mr. Paul, if you were buying today, you know, building the unit, building the building today, you know, through this, you know, and I could see how it could fit more in.
Right.
And, but my, I guess my reluctance is the fact, you know, I drove by there today, you know, and, you know, that's the senior places right behind you, they're starting to come here. They're looking good.
Yeah, my question is, how many of them are going to rent that from with train sales?
I heard your comment on that, okay, I understand that. You know, and I could see, I could see more of a, more of a gateway there than I think I could last time you met. Okay, here, you know, and that's, and I do feel that you're not the property owner right now, you know, in that sense. property owner right now, you know, in that sense. I think if, if you were purchasing the property right now and making the changes, you know, according to the, you know, the review board, you know, as far as the architectural designs and things like that, I, I think, I, I think I would, I would feel differently. But you're taking three years and, you know, and I can understand why you want, you know, possibly it could be sooner than how successful it is, but I'll say three years for the sake that that's what timeframe you're planning to give it. And, and that's, you know, and if it doesn't work, then it could go back to what it was before. And I, you know, so, and then we got, and then, and then we got, and then we could have other, you know, only be used for automobiles, you know? You have an overlay where you can do automobiles there, and, and who knows what it'd look like at that point in time? That's my concern.
But I, I appreciate your remarks as far as that goes, because it's a big concern of mine, too. I think I would look at this differently were we need to be looking at a new site plan and architectural review now and, and see if it met those requirements. At the same time, I still don't know that I'd feel comfortable with the idea of, of basically making a spot zone type of overlay that specifically covered one specific use in one specific area. That's not the, that's not the application of zone. I'm, I'm concerned, just like Royce said, that somebody else will come in and say, well, yeah, the zoning doesn't really matter to me either, because I have this special use for this special place. We have initial use permits for that kind of thing.
I, and I.
But it still has to be a, a use that we're just concerned about. And here, the city council is saying, we don't even want to look at this type of use in this zone at all.
And I, and I feel strongly for property rights and such, but the property owner's not here presenting that. You know, he's not presenting the, the plan. You know, a year as a tenant is, you know, hopefully based on a future, you know, solution, you know, to, to that property. And, and so, you know, we're not dealing directly with the property owner and dealing, you know, directly with, I'm sure the property owner would want to, he would ever make some the best amount of money, whether it be this or whether it be that. You know, that, when I say that, who knows what, you know what I mean? And so, those are my concerns. I think if you were the owner and you're making a commitment today to buy the property, and you, you brought your plans up there, you know, I think, I think I'd look at it quite differently.
Maybe Commissioner still already, I think he asked us, but I don't know if it was there. When the city council, when the city council may suggest a possible, is this, is one of the things they recommended? Was there a list of things that were recommended, or was it just, just revisit it?
Revisit it in a different way that wasn't for the entire zone.
See, if it were me, I would attempt to rezone it, considering it's right next to the other zone. But the problem is, if the zone that's across the street, it's across Center Street that would allow it, but it's not across Six West, right? So, that doesn't solve that problem, but I'm not there with this yet.
I'd like to, Jennifer, I'd like to hear what your comments are, if you're, if you're willing.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm huge on property rights, so.
Right. And I can, I can.
Everybody's aware of that. My thing is, if we put an overlay, both of this property that is currently non-conforming, that may be no longer mine.
With what it's currently doing is auto repair, no. It's a non-conforming use, it's auto sales overlay, it is not a physical thing committed, but as long as it continues, it'll continue as a, a non-conforming use, grandfathered use.
But part of the, part of property would then become conforming as far as the.
As far as auto sales.
Well, for that matter, we could go ahead and we could just make auto repair okay right there, too. And then we could make it all conforming, but it wouldn't meet the, the intent of the zone.
That's what I'm hoping to score. That was, that's, it's an, it's an improved option, and I'm gonna go after rights on this one, and it's approved, um, option, and that's the option.
Any other remarks?
I kind of feel like this is similar to some of the issues with conditional use curbs, where, you know, the city council wants to allow it, then they should allow it, and if they don't, then they shouldn't, and they shouldn't be carving out these exceptions, because that's just open, you have to always approve the exception. That's my, you know, pressing, I think, to say.
I, I mean, I think you could go ahead and you could put this in as a, auto sales as a conditional use within that zone. I don't know if it's, come and talk about, well, what are you gonna do to make the impact compared to what the, you know, full intent of the zone is, or whatever, like you want, or, but I don't like changing zone, zone just for one thing. I mean, if, otherwise, we could just pass the only out. So, is anybody prepared for another motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move the planning commission recommend that the city council deny the request of J.D. Brisk for the creation of City Code Section 10-13C Automobile Sales Overlay, and so what, and. All right, so.
Yeah.
I know, yeah. I move the planning commission recommend that the city council deny the request of J.D. Brisk for the creation of the City Code Section 10-13C Automobile Sales Overlay.
Okay, we got a motion from Commissioner Adams, do you have a second?
Do we want this finding back there? There would be the reasons.
Yeah, we, we need to. Do we need a, do we need a second, a second verse?
No, it should be part of the motion, sir.
Go ahead and put that in there, because that's gonna be part of.
How about, how about. Inconsistent with the.
The purpose of the, of the zone, the intent of the zone.
Underlying downtown village zone.
Say that again, Amy.
It does not meet the intent of the underlying downtown village zone. And, um, because automobile sales have been deliberately admitted from the downtown village zone by the.
And doing an overlay would, could possibly establish a precedent that would weaken our, our, towards our zone ordinances?
Quick time to turn, right?
Okay.
Let's do this one more time. Mr. Chair, I move the planning commission recommend that the city council deny the request of J.D. Brisk for the creation of City Code Section 10-13C Automobile Sales Overlay based on the following findings of fact. The, the commission has found that allowing an automobile sales overlay would be inconsistent with intent of the underlying downtown village zone, a finding that the city council has already deliberately excluded auto sales from the current zone, and that by allowing a overlay, we would be setting a precedent for other owners to essentially carve out exceptions to certain things that have already been expressly restricted in that zone.
Okay, we got a motion from Commissioner Adams, do you have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Steele. All those in favor? What's indicated by the razor? Hands here.
Aye.
Okay, aye, so.
Yeah, the minutes can't hear that.
The commissioners, guys, kind of going on a great beat, everybody. So, Commissioner Neidiger, Commissioner Steele, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Richards, and Commissioner.
It's hard to keep track.
I know. Uh, Carden and Fisher Armstrong are PAs, and Fisher Batista proceeds to make. Okay, sorry, that one fails. Let's move forward with the next one, which is.
This item will report to the city council on December first.
Uh, the next one, yeah. Oh, and let the record show that Commissioner Coons has rejoined the commission. This is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to consider a request at sixty East, twelve hundred North in the Northfield subdivision. Public hearing to consider a request by Joe Gephardt for the conditional use permit to expand the number of allowed residents in an assisted living center on property located in approximately sixty East, twelve hundred North in the R one eight single-family residential zone. All right.
So, this is a revision of a conditional use permit. So, originally in nineteen ninety-one, there was a conditional use permit that was granted for this home, and to be an assisted living center, that time it was a B-High home, which is, it's not a B-High home anymore, but same type of facility. And so, that was granted, and then updated in two thousand and seven to restrict it to eight people living in the home. So, doing research on that, the old code and the old staff report didn't state any reason for why it was eight people. And staff, I mean, they assumed there was a reason, and so, since there wasn't any, any hard evidence as to why it was restricted to eight, the applicant, well, it's not the reason the applicant has requested nine, but the applicant has requested nine. And so, we've, we've done some research, and the applicant provided this estate code, which allows for up to sixteen people in this type of facility. And so, because he's operating it currently with nine, was approved for eight, that's why we're here viewing it. So, since the code, the state code allows for up to sixteen, I don't feel like sixteen is necessarily the best thing for the property. It's, it's pretty maxed out as far as the home. So, you can see the property is, the applicant provided this drawing on the property to show what's being utilized. So, you have five bedrooms on this side, and, oh, sorry, six bedrooms, and then three more on this side. And then the rest of the areas, usually utilized for open space, living rooms, kitchens, and so on. So, the house is pretty well maxed out as far as size for nine people, so we feel like that is a good, good limit to put on this conditional use permit. We know that there are concerns from neighbors as there were previously, well, I could say there's concerns from neighbor now, I guess we'll find out, but if there are, that was one of the issues that came up, was the number of people that was, were living there, which is why, it's my opinion that it was under taken, because of concerns of neighbors. So, again, I'm not sure on that. Anyway, so we feel like because there's nine bedrooms here currently in the, in the house, and there's room for more, more people to live there, I feel like that's a good number. The difference between eight and nine, staff can't really seem to reason why there's a significant difference between the two on impact to the neighborhood, where this is an assisted living center, these aren't, you know, high-traffic, high-noise type of people that are gonna be living here. So, as you can see now at the bottom, the applicant provided this, this drawing showing a forty-foot by forty-foot driveway, which has more than the five required parking spaces for a facility this size. And so, based on the fact that it does meet the code, and it also meets the state code, we don't have a city code that restricts the number of people living in these types of facilities. So, based on the fact that it meets all the requirements, we recommend approval of this increase from eight to nine. So, are there any questions?
Commissioner. Is applicant present?
Yes. My name's Joseph Gephardt, I live at eleven sixty west, twenty-six hundred north, Pleasant Grove. This is one of our facilities. This facility was bought in bankruptcy in two thousand and eight, shut down by the state, and we brought it all up to code. We've always been under the impression it was a nine-bed, it is a nine-bedroom, it was purposely built for nine-bed, eleven residents. The two, the room number one is a coupled room, the patio outside that, but we've always operated as that. We've never, we didn't know this until we sold it. And so, we went back to Sean, who was the, one of the city guys at the time, and he didn't know why. There was some glitch, because this was the first one built here. So, that was it. So, we checked a few other ones, looked at the property, we're almost double the size of the property, double the parking as another one that was in the area. We haven't changed anything. It was purposely built for that process and for that use, and we're not adding any square footage. It is what it is. And we've been licensed five estate for ten units, you know, it's always been licensed for ten units, but something happened back in ninety-one or ninety-two when it was built. We're not sure, and Sean wasn't sure what. That's about it.
Any questions?
Yeah, we're not, we're not adding anything on, we're not adding more people or anything else, it's just a glitch somewhere in there.
Why, why, I, I have a question. Why are you asking us for nine if, if the room number one is a coupled room?
I.
I saw one of these last year, so.
Oh, yeah, no, it was, the city has it for some reason, the new owner can't get his license from the city because they have it licensed and they, and we didn't know why. We actually, I did, I went back and called Sean, and he couldn't figure it out either. He said there was a glitch, but that's when I went and measured other places and made sure we were on compliance. But, yes, it was always like that. We bought it like that and had been sold four times like that.
Sir, I think the question is, how come you're not asking for ten?
It's only a nine-bed.
Okay.
Yeah, it's only a nine-bed, it was built for a nine-bed, but they kind of undertake. But it's, you know, you get an extra resident, and we're licensed by the state for the coupled rooms.
Right, okay.
Which is not a free zone.
So, so I think perhaps there was a little bit of misunderstanding as to, we're talking residents, we're talking bedrooms, I think we assumed that one resident per bedroom, so. As you clarified here tonight, is it one unit that is a double?
Yeah, one unit. Room number one, it's a double the size of.
So, there's ten residents?
It's its own bathroom, it's own patio.
He said there's eleven residents.
No.
So, there's ten residents?
There's nine residents.
If you added one more, it'd be ten.
Yes, and that's where it lies for, if you had a couple in there.
So, you might want to just clarify that the nine bedrooms, that would allow it to ten residents.
Yeah, it's always been like that.
Okay, I have a question. Thank you, I think we don't have any more questions for you. Are any of the neighbors in the public want to come speak to this one?
Commissioners, my name is Chris Chu, and I reside at fifteen eighty-two Bridlebrook Circle in Salt Lake City. I am potentially the new owner of this facility. As I said, actually based on our decision here tonight, I just wanted to lend my support that the new license issued by the state doesn't use, it's a ten-residence, and that's the finding that their surveyors and licenses come out, and that this is what they're doing and what they recommend, so.
I think the only thing we'd be concerned about is whether it's bothering the neighbors or not.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak to this one? If you will close the public session and bring it back up here?
I think it's the state law allows for up to sixteen, you gotta, they're asking for ten, right?
I think the state has not had approved them at ten based on size, so I think that's going.
That makes sense, huh?
Yeah.
So, ten instead of nine.
Somebody like to make the motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that I move the, move the planning commission through the request of Joe Gephardt for a conditional use permit, allowing a conditional use in that. Allowing, the request of Joe Gephardt allowing a conditional use permit for assisted living center for up to ten residents on property located at sixty East, twelve hundred North in the R one eight single-family residential zone. Ten residents, nine bedrooms, the one in the bedroom is a double, which would allow up to ten.
A second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Commissioner Richards and a second from Commissioner Coons, all in favor?
Aye.
That's us. Thanks. And now, this will go forward, or?
No.
This is done? Got it? So, we go on to the next one, and the next one is, the reason that, on this one, this one. Some of you guys know, we as commissioners have spent a lot of late, long nights working on this, trying to go ahead and see if we could anticipate most of the, of the concerns that all of us would have, and talking to neighbors and friends and family and everybody about this one, so we've done a lot of work for about a year on it, so. This one is a public hearing for a City Code text amendment, City Y. Public hearing to consider a request by the Pleasant Grove City for a proposed text amendment creating City Code Section ten dash fifteen dash forty-seven and amending Sections ten dash six dash two.
sections ten dash six dash two, definitions ten dash nine A dash two. Permitted conditional and accessory uses, ten dash nine B dash two, permitted conditional and accessory uses, and ten dash nine C dash two, permitted conditional and accessory uses, and ten dash fourteen dash twenty-four dash two dash C, permitted conditional and accessory uses permitting accessory apartments in the Pleasant Grove city code. Okay. So we can hang on to that slide for a second. So just kind of explain background here. So as, as, Chair, I'm trying to mention here, we're working on this as a city request to the city council. This has kind of been an on and off thing for the last fifteen years or so, and really a lot more intensely researched in the last year and a half. So since I've been here, August of last year, worked with neighborhood committees, and we've discussed the potential code, come up with, and see what the concerns were from people in various neighborhoods as they talk to the, the chairs. And then we've also, as we've been mentioned, worked really extensively with the planning commission and the city council and trying to find answers to questions and concerns that have been brought up by residents and looking at the potential pros and cons of allowing for accessory apartments versus continuing with what we're doing. So what we're doing right now is we don't allow them, but we don't actively enforce it. We don't go out looking for people with accessory apartments because we just don't have the manpower for that. So the state legislature has upheld that for code enforcement in the same Utah that we do, enforcement based on complaint basis, and so that's what we do. So if somebody comes in and complains about accessory apartment, we'll go and work with that property owner to bring it into compliance or to remove the apartment, whatever it may be. We do have some in the city that are legal. Back prior to nineteen eighty-five, we used to commit two family dogs in several areas in the downtown area. So basically what this is, this is gonna be focused on providing housing for people who don't maybe have the opportunity to live in this area otherwise. So from a planning standpoint, we're always looking for opportunities to help people to live and work closer together, to be able to provide affordable housing for people and to be able to make it so that we have more housing equality. So I'm gonna go on over some numbers real quick. Between two thousand and nine and two thousand and thirteen, the median house, median household income in Utah County was two hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars. So for Pleasant Grove, that's, it's higher, or sorry, the median, that's, that's the median, home value. So anyway, yeah, so that's considerably different. All right. So we're just on the, so, all right, so median income though, in the county was fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. So we break that down by age, under twenty-five, you have twenty-six thousand, nine forty-four, twenty-five to forty-four years is sixty-five thousand, one twenty-eight, and forty-five to sixty-four years is seventy-seven thousand, six, sixty-one. So with those differences, it's pretty significant. The average age in Pleasant Grove is about twenty-five, that's the median age. So given that that's kind of a little bit unevenly balanced because you have a lot of minors, about forty-one percent of the city is under eighteen, so however, based on that, you can figure that there's probably a lot of younger families with children that live in the city, and it's a pretty safe assumption to make. So more likely, and looking at the data, if you see the numbers of people that are in these age groups, the majority of people are gonna be closer to the twenty-five and underage age group for, for income, which is that twenty-six thousand. So roughly twenty-six to thirty-five-ish. So based on that, the Utah, or the United States Department of Urban Housing, Housing and Urban Development says that families who pay more than thirty percent of their income for housing are considered cost-burdened. So it's kind of the, the maximum that they look at. So I kind of use that as a benchmark. So if we're looking at thirty percent of your income for housing, what that basically says is if you make, let's see if I can remember here. So for, well, for a house in Pleasant Grove, the median housing cost is gonna be twenty, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars. That's for everything. So if you're looking at single-family homes, it's considerably higher, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five, which is twenty-six percent higher than the county average. So housing is more expensive here than it is generally in the county, but we have a wide range of housing costs in the county. So if you have a, let's see, for a house across the two twenty-four, the average for all the housing in Pleasant Grove, that takes in condos, townhouses, single-family homes, everything. If you have a thirty-year mortgage with a five percent interest rate, ten percent down payment, you're looking at about a thousand eighty-six a month. So if you go for a single-family home with that median cost in Pleasant Grove, the cost raises to thirteen eighty-eight a month for that house. So it's considerably high, based on the county and what, what the costs are. So basically, let's see, one in three people in Utah County makes forty thousand dollars or less, so a third of our county does. So basically to buy a house in Pleasant Grove presents a significant financial burden. So half of that group, which would be fifteen percent of the county, are looking at paying half or more of their income to buy a house in Pleasant Grove at median. And I know that there's differences, but the median is what it is. So, let's see, now, given that that's buying a home, so if you're looking at the rent, median rent in two thousand and thirteen in Pleasant Grove is a thousand eighty-one per month, which is almost the same as those mortgage payment amounts. So what we're looking at is, you know, we've worked at providing affordable housing in the city, and I feel like we've been fairly successful with that. But there are some, some areas in the city, like the Grove Zone area in the southwest, where rents are still pretty high. You're looking at between nine hundred to fifteen hundred dollars a month, is, and the median being about twelve hundred. So not exactly what we'd consider affordable housing, because again, you have to make forty-five thousand plus to live out there. So anyway, long explanation, that's that. That kind of gives like a foundation for why accessory apartments are, are a good thing. So we can go to the next slide. So the proposed ordinance basically says that if you wanna have an accessory apartment, talking like single-family homes, it provides an opportunity for people to provide more affordable housing for like young couples, older couples, people on fixed incomes who wouldn't otherwise be able to live in the city, who may work in the city or work close by, but they may otherwise be stuck living in an outlying city with higher transportation costs running to and fro. So what we require is that if you're gonna rent out of your basement or your attic or whatever, that you have to live in the home. So it has to be owner-occupied. Let's go to the next one. So it can be attached to the home or can be detached, what we propose. So somebody has a warrant from the property where they can have an accessory building that would be big enough to have an accessory apartment, they could do that. Let's go to the next one. So different types of occupancy, this is for an accessory apartment on top of what's allowed in the home. And, and keep in mind that this is mirroring what's already permitted in the home. So everything that you see here would also be permitted in the main dwelling. So we've got one person by themselves, two related people, you can have four people that are unrelated, which is the top one there, or you can have any of those plus one guest that can be there for no more than thirty days. So what that does is it makes it so that really it's just, it's an accessory dwelling unit, has the same general density as, as what's allowed in the primary unit. Let's go to the next one. So permitted areas in the zone, agricultural zone, which is way up north, we have a very small section of that above Millie Hill Park. The RR, rural residential zone, which is about the top half of the city area. The R one, single-family residential zone, which is the bottom, bottom east section, pretty much east of State Street. And then the RM seven, median multiple-family residential, which is kind of down south of downtown. The downtown village zone, which is downtown area, and then the Grove Mixed Housing Zone, which is out west of State Street in a couple selected areas. So going through the rest of the code, I apologize, I don't have any more pictures of any of the type. But we have, so, so only one apartment would be allowed per property. So for example, say you had a, an acre property up in the RR zone, you couldn't rent out your basement and have an accessory building, or you couldn't have multiple apartments within the same building. So we've debated about that a lot, about property sizes, about house size, and determine that one accessory apartment, because we want it to be an accessory use to the primary use. You don't wanna look at a house and say, oh, there's an accessory apartment there. It's, you wanna surprise people, I guess. So where they're allowed is over the garage in the basement, and in addition, or as I mentioned earlier, detached accessory unit. Entrances, it shouldn't allow for duplex appearance. What we mean by that is if you're looking at the front of the house, you don't wanna have side-by-side front doors that one leads to the accessory apartment, one leads to the main dwelling. So if you're gonna have an accessory apartment traditionally, you know, you're looking at like a basement or an attic or something like that, and you wanna have a separate access, it's, it's not making it, you know, look like a duplex. You don't want it to have the appearance of a duplex. Addressing would be A and B for the primary and accessory apartment. So if your, if your address is, you know, one hundred north State Street, you have one hundred A, and that's the primary dwelling, one hundred B would be the accessory apartment. And that's really for emergency services, helps them to be able to find people. You don't wanna have somebody having a heart attack in the basement and they, you know, well, they're, they're here, but, you know, where are they, kind of thing. And so, and that has happened at times in various cities. So, let's see, so as far as off-street parking, it's been a considerable concern, it's been brought up a, a few times. So apparently for a single-family home, we require four off-street parking sp, or four off-street parking spaces, two in the garage, two on the driveway. And we're gonna require two additional parking spaces off-street. So those would have to be on a paved surface, so whether that be off to the side of the garage or wherever, somebody could manage that, as long as it's not parked in the front yard area. And then the living area must be different, or must be separate from the principal unit. So say you have a downstairs apartment, it needs to be separate, separate area. So we're not looking at communal-style living where you'd have like maybe renting out a room and then you use a kitchen and that kind of thing. They need to have their own kitchen and their own sleeping area. So then we'd also need to make sure that international building codes, that, this is really just a life safety issue. A lot of times when we have accessory apartments or legal duplexes, triplexes and so on that are created, they kind of tend to be jerry-rigged, especially with electrical. So I worked in Bonneville before this, and there was a boy that was actually killed because somebody jerry-rigged a two-twenty outlet to their washing machine or dryer and ended up electric, electrically injured. So, you know, this is something that we wanna make sure that people are, are doing things safely, so they're better for their liability, but also just making sure that we maintain the safety of people in the city. And then interior access must be maintained if it's attached, of course. So if you have like a basement, again, you have a stairwell down to your basement inside, you can't just wall that off. You make sure that's still openable, again, for emergency services, if they need to get in and you have ways to access the apartment. Apartments cannot be sold, it kind of goes without saying, you can't sell off part of your property without creating another parcel, and so, but we just wanted to codify that so it's clear. And then as far as registration goes, it'd be a twenty-five dollar one-time fee to cover our inspections, just making sure that the apartment's up to code. And then once this, if this was approved, this accessory apartment ordinance, we'd have a two-year period that would start up, where people could come in, they'd register, and there would be no, no problems that would occur if they didn't, basically. There'd be no, no fines or anything. But after that two-year period, we're gonna make sure to publicize everything and make sure it's clear. People that accessory apartments are permitted, please come in and register. You know, if you don't have it registered after that two-year period and somebody complains about it and the city hears about it, then it's codified that we could enact a one-thousand-dollar fine, doesn't mean that it will be necessarily, but, and then we'll determine what's out of compliance with it, and then what the potential for either additional fines or just working maybe to improve the property and bring it up to code. So just kind of something to encourage people to come in and get them registered. So, let's see, home occupation businesses, which are just a home business, those would be allowed as long as there's no customer traffic and they have a written, a written permission from the property owner. So basically if somebody wants to work, live in the basement, have a home office, they can do that, as long as they meet the requirements. So overall, it's pretty, pretty simple. We used to have a lot more stuff in here in this code, or else I had some things added, but it's been narrowed down quite a bit. So we, we don't wanna over-regulate things, we also wanna make sure that we're taking care of life safety issues and making sure that we have an opportunity for people who wanna move into the city, who maybe couldn't afford to do so otherwise, they could do that. So based on, on the fact that all of these things are, we've been heavily deliberated on, in terms of things are life safety issues, we wanna make sure that we're creating the best situation that we can while still allowing for accessory apartments, we recommend approval if you all consider this great. Okay, so any questions? Do you have any questions for us so far? Okay. Okay. Obviously, we've got a lot of people that are here for this one. What I would like to ask you to do is to keep your remarks to no more than four, five minutes, and two or three minutes, and, and please don't repeat a concern or a remark that somebody else has made, so we don't hear the same thing over and over and over again. And I, I'll open this up and give you the time. So if anybody has a remark, just remember to stand up and, and give us your name and your current address, so that we have that for the record.
Frederick Reed, I live at thirteen eighty-two east, three seventy north. My concern is this essentially eliminates single-family zoning. I specifically bought our home in the area because it's a single-family zone, if I wanted to live in a duplex or a four-plex over Buttoness, similar residence. We have a home in our area at eleven ninety-eight east, three hundred north, that the original homeowner, whom we knew very well, built it specifically with three apartments in it, and current investor just bought it with the idea of renting it out three of the ways. He's sent his, you know, the city thankfully has enforced his own laws and he's put it back up on the market for sale. That's my concern, is you allow one house to go duplex or triplex and pretty soon it spreads to a higher subdivision, you no longer have single-family residences zoned anywhere in the city. And so where in the city do you go to live in a subdivision of single-family residency? That's, that's my concern. I mean, there, there is no, I mean, I appreciate, to be sure that he's his property right owner, well, I'm a property owner myself, and I bought specifically with the idea of having a single-family zone residence. And so there are certainly places in the city, I go up Center Street pretty much every day going home, and there are plenty of very nice and attractive multiple-family residences. And if people wish to live in an area like that, then there are places owned in the city for that already, so I don't see any reason to have a city where you have no single-family residences period anywhere in the city at all, after that, so.
I mean, so you're aware, the proposed ordinance will allow, the, the owner must live in the property in order to have, there, there's no such thing as a duplex going into a, a single-family zone neighborhood.
But each, but each owner could create a second apartment in his or her place.
That's the proposed ordinance, yes, but not two of them. So that's, that's a.
That would limit the ones already here that does have the three residences in it.
They wouldn't be able to be licensed for that, so. Okay, thank you.
On May of fifteen north, thirteen hundred east, I don't have an auxiliary apartment in my basement, but as a real estate investor and a former Realtor and broker, I too believe in private property rights. And in listening to what's been said in this meeting tonight on the different things, I would challenge all of you to come up with even five private property rights that we still have, other than the color of the paint we put on the walls or our carpet. We have to get approval for what we put on the property, we have to have approval for everything, okay? With enough of that said, this kind of thing is unenforceable. There's no way that you can regulate this and enforce this law. The only way you could do that is if you, oh, mob, excuse me, I'm upset when I think about this. If you model Hitler, if you go totally socialistic, which we are doing in this country, this one-screaming country is going down the toilet because we don't have private property rights anywhere. anymore, okay? Who I have living in my property is my business, okay? If you're going to enforce this, you're going to have to have a force of Gestapo agents, code enforcement, whatever you want to call them, that are out giving weekly search warrants to go through everybody's house every week to check and see what they're doing. As far as the safety issues and everything, yeah, there's safety issues. I, as a landlord, I have to go through the property when a tenant moves out, and I have to fix things because they jerry-rigged those, okay? That's an individual thing, okay, that somebody has messed up. But to be regulated constantly, every move I do, that is not government's place, okay? A lot of these places, the people need someone living with them. I don't know what it is in Utah, but Utah has this love affair with huge houses, okay? I have a couple of rental properties that I wish I hadn't bought at rental properties because they're too doggone big. When the tenants move out, I spend three weeks just painting the place because they're so big and they could put a lot more people in. But the point of this is that this is not an enforceable thing. You cannot regulate it without having a whole army of people. To start finding people and, and all that, and asking people to complain about their neighbors, okay? I wish I would have brought it with me. I received a letter, okay, a couple of weeks ago, about one of my rental properties in another city. Of a neighbor, one of the neighbors complaining about my tenant and about how they have all these other families living with them and living in a travel trailer in the driveway and all, and that they weren't taking care of stuff. Okay, I went down to the house. I went eight houses either way, both sides of the street. In fact, the letter said that the house properties should be condemned so bad. I went down the street, eight houses either way. There were at least six other properties that looked worse than mine, okay, and what the tenant was doing. I talked with the tenant. It's a mixed-race family, nobody living in the trailer, no other family living in the house. Some, and I'll excuse the term, some self-righteous neighbor didn't know what was going on complained. What does that do for neighborhood camaraderie, okay? Personally, I would rather take a big copy of the letter and distribute it to all the neighbors saying, someone in this neighborhood wrote this letter to me, doesn't know what they're doing. That kind of thing. You know, all you're going to do if you have something like this is you're going to create animosity, okay? I can appreciate people don't want a lot of people living in places. But, you know, if I want somebody living in my basement, that should be my right, my choice.
So you're for this?
No, I say scratch the whole stupid idea. If people want to do it, let them do it.
Okay, so if you're, so right now, but you're not for what we have currently where we can add?
I think you have no business trying to regulate anything to do with it.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's, it's unenforceable. You cannot do it. It's just not going to happen. What's that?
They're trying to make this allowable.
You know what, let's, let's just keep it.
Well, it is being happened. What I'm saying is don't worry about it, leave it alone.
Okay. Appreciate your opinion, thank you.
All right, I just have a comment for you.
Sure.
Don't you appreciate that that neighbor came right to you instead of going to the city?
It was an anonymous letter. How would you feel about anonymous letter telling you that you're the scum of the earth because you've got a property that's so bad?
Well, I think it's good that you went and checked it out. But, you know, they didn't, it was anonymous to you maybe, but at least they didn't, I don't know, they go to the police, they didn't try to get you fined, they were letting you know.
Okay, I'll respond to you again. Anonymous letters tell me people don't have the guts to talk to me, okay? I got an anonymous letter, again, years ago, from somebody that didn't know the situation, telling me how bad I was as a landlord and so forth, so on. And they had no idea what the situation was, okay? And I'm LDS, which I'm assuming some of you in here are too, and that letter came from somebody in my ward. How do you think I felt walking into church because somebody thought I was a scum of the earth and they didn't know what was going on? How did you feel? It shut me down emotionally for 12 years. So let's, this is, this is not enforceable.
Just, just out of curiosity, are you Randy's dad?
No, uncle.
Uncle, got it. I know you're really long. What's your name and your status?
Stan Williams, 175 South 1300 East. I live in an R1 zone and opposite of him. I want to be able to have an accessory apartment. We were talking about affordability of people being able to afford to live in the city. And we're talking about these young people. I'm getting close to retirement age. I cannot stay in the city unless I have an accessory apartment because my home is not paid for. So I have an acre of property. I want to be able to have an accessory apartment on it. I don't want to have to go underground. I agree with Vaughn on 90% of what he said here. I feel like if, if everybody knew how many accessory apartments are in here right now, check your wards, you know? I'll bet you in my ward, I'll bet you there's at least 10. And I'll bet you there's a lot of elderly people that have those that cannot get by without that. That's what I'm concerned about. I don't like the regulation either, but I also feel like, you know, Salt Lake right now is trying to loosen their accessory apartment restrictions because they realize that there's a need for people to be able to afford them and for people to be able to stay in their houses. And we right here are trying to do the opposite. And when I look through all of the papers and stuff on this, it appeared to me that you guys were trying to be a landlord's landlord. And I didn't like what I was reading there. I can understand you're wanting to have an idealized, perfect ordinance, but I would, Vaughn, I don't agree that it's your business. Sorry to offend, but, you know, stay out of my house, stay out of my business, stay off my property, and let me regulate. And I will take care of making sure that you guys know who's in my property. But I don't like being controlled by the city government.
Okay.
I don't know if I read it or not because I don't have the exact wording of the ordinance.
What's your name and your address?
Melanie Pryor, 64 South Screw Street.
Okay.
I don't have the exact wording of the ordinances that are conflicting with accessory apartments or the exact wording that the ordinance, new ordinance will include. However, I get the idea that with the ordinances that exist, we have to accept the idea that regulation has to be possible in some way. So my question is, if the new ordinance wording is going to allow for that and if it will improve it, if we're not able to regulate or if we're not able to enforce, to enforce the requirements of existing ordinances, adding additional wording may not improve a situation. So if we want to allow for accessory apartments in the exact wording and be specific and accurate and have it written there, then I think that we could look at having fewer things that need to be regulated. In other words, not in regards to the number of people necessarily because that's not, that's not a reasonable thing to regulate.
Hold on. Would you like some response as you go on? Because we've worked on this ordinance in depth for a long, long time.
I don't know if, I'm coming across as grateful, but I'm very thankful for it, the time and years that have been required to see this process. And I am so exceptionally thankful that we all get to be a part of it. I think this is one of the fundamental things that we see as a display for rising individuals in the country, so.
But, and, and I appreciate that. The thing I'm concerned about is that as you stand there, if you don't understand something, if you're bringing something up as a concern, that, because it flashed up on the screen for a second and you didn't get a chance to read through it really carefully.
No, what I mean is that, okay, so Mr. Davis was, was saying that, that the idea of the new ordinance might include the number of people. And if there's a guest that stays, they can stay for 30 days or less.
I understand that's the same regulation that we have for your current house right now.
Okay, that's the thing. I wouldn't know that. There's so many ordinances that the city includes. No one knows all of the ordinances. And if we're unable to enforce them, maybe, I mean, some people may know all the ordinance even to the, most people do not know all the ordinances.
None of us in this room.
But, but, and for the other intent, the intent of ordinances is to keep it kindly and neighborly and friendly and, and secure peace in the community. So I don't feel like wording as a new ordinance is prepared to, to enforce that necessarily as far as it is imposing on individuals' rights to, to do with their property. What is necessary to keep their?
Let me, let me respond to that a little bit. The gentleman that's behind you, Fred, I think. See, the idea behind ordinances is, and what we've tried to do is to balance this so that the neighbor is not so impacted by the decisions that are made by the, the person who wants to, say, have an accessory apartment. So that there is some sort of a balance between, in order to keep us neighborly. That's the whole point behind this.
To keep us, to, to keep the client community, the community really, to the community, us, with them.
No, to make it so that you and your next-door neighbor don't have a problem with each other where you balance the, the right to, to quiet enjoyment of your property, of his property, with your right to use your property as you deem fit. See, the problem is, is that if your neighbor over here is like, they, they've got six accessory apartments next to, that there needs to be some point that, that there's a balance.
Right.
Where he can say, help me, this is crazy, I've got 18 cars parked in the street.
I'm not opposed to additional ordinance. It's just the wording we choose and the amount of reasonably regulated things we choose to put there. So the only thing I consider is if we're going to make a change in the decision, which it seems like this is the point we've met, it's been 15 years, and we want a new word in there, we want it to be more specific, that if an accessory building is not in conflict with any other ordinances, then that's what it is there, and that's it.
That, that's what we, that's what, so you know, that's what we try to do.
Is that it, okay.
We've worked very hard and, and, you know, we have, it, it, I mean, it's been a discussion that's gone back and forth, and we spent a lot of evenings. And, and, and a lot of us, there are several of us here that are, I mean, we've got attorneys on the commission, we've got several of us that are Realtors who have been selling real estate for, I think, all of us more than 10 years. And, and we, so we've looked at ordinances in Crowborough, and we've looked at them in Orem, and we've looked at them in Linden, and we've looked at them in Highland. And we've looked at all those different ordinances, and you know what? Most of them, we find, are too onerous. They're too strict, and they don't allow for enough in terms of, of property rights. But we try, I, I'll tell you, all of us, I think, will say that we tried to strike a balance that would work by protecting individuals' property rights.
Okay.
And, and protecting the, your neighbor's quiet enjoyment of his property because he bought it with an expectation as well, so.
Right.
I promise you, we have agonized over that. And, and it's not, sometimes it's not fun because the city council says, you guys go do it and come back to us. But that's our job, so that's what we, that's what we attempted to do.
Okay, so the new ordinance, the proposal is that there are two parking spaces required onsite.
Two additional?
Two additional, two additional parking spaces required onsite. And by that, could someone, the MRV parking?
Yes.
And that could be the two additional, so, okay. Another question is, as far as the publicizing of the ordinance or the change in the ordinance, is that going to happen to your doctor or when the ordinance changes? And then the people who are a part of the ordinance change will be able to see it, and they have two years to come in compliance?
That's what we want to do, that's why.
Okay, so the publication will happen at the time of the ordinance change, not to your doctor?
As a matter of fact, we've tried to, I mean, you may have found out about this from your newsletter. I don't know, how did you find out that we were doing this? So we, we've had this ready for a long, long time, actually, a, well, a month and a half, maybe. But we pushed it off because we wanted to make sure that we had the ability to put it in the newsletter and put it out on the website and put it in some different places to let you come and give us your input. So, because this is important to us. And, and once, so the next step beyond this, and the next place that people can have some input is at the city council meeting. And they, they obviously are your elected representatives, and so they have the final say. But after that, then we will get it out to where everybody really knows about it. And then we have that two-year period so people can get registered over a two-year period and, and come and learn about it and make sure that they're in compliance with it and understand it before there's going to be any fining anybody. But we do want to have some way to say, look, you know, we'd encourage you to actually pay a little bit of attention to the fact that now we do have, have an ordinance in place.
Okay. Okay, so from your perspective, the actual changes of the way that the ordinance will be read because it's an additional actual amendment for ordinance?
Changes several places in the code.
Okay, it changes several places. So what are the exact changes? Does parking, or what are the, I know he just, am I just asking what he just showed us?
So maybe I can answer that.
Sure.
So it, it creates an entirely new section defining an accessory apartment and what is allowed and what, what's required. And then it also changes the section for each residential zone to reference that accessory apartment to vote. So that's, that's why there are changes in multiple places because it's allowing that in each zone and then revert back to that. Definitely.
True. Totally true. This is, as, as we said, we've been working on this for months and running commission days. And I encourage everybody here to regularly look for changes of those things because you can be part of that, not just tonight, but, you know, throughout the whole process. You know, in fact, we even had a city council meeting where the majority of the meeting was, was focused on this. And, and, and so, and yes, we get busy lives every which way. But, you know, we need to also be aware of some of the other areas, you know, what's going on in our city, you know, and to, we don't want it to be a surprise to anybody, but there's, there's an opportunity, I think, in, in, in the preliminary stages that really adds some, you know, and there, because oftentimes when we discuss this, there's nobody in the audience, nobody.
Also, there's a city council meeting on Tuesday where the, the discussion is. So we'll make a recommendation to the council or the council.
I think what we're going to do, well, lots of people can stand up. If you want to make a remark though, you've got to come and get on record.
Yeah.
I think what we'll do is, is let's go ahead and let's take each of your concerns. And Commissioner Adams is taking detailed notes. And then we'll try to answer as many questions about this as we can, all of one, one big shot. And then if we don't cover it, then raise your hand and, and let's see if we can kind of review it again. Go ahead.
I'm John Pryor, 64 South Screw Street. Wanted to start off, I'm, I'm a public educator and I work closely with the administration. So I feel, you're getting rocks thrown at you right now. And at the very beginning, at the beginning, I appreciate, I appreciate that you stated that you have put lots of hours. And this is my first time ever being in here. And so personally, I, I plan on, hopefully, if we have lots of little kids and we're paying a babysitter to be here right now. So I, I would like to be more involved in, and I, and it gives me hope seeing how you've handled everything today. So thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, I agree with the whole, we're losing our power. But I also understand that you are just trying to balance because we are different-minded people. And so my comment, it's not a concern. Concerns have been addressed, if I had any, so I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Any more remarks?
Steven Moon, 895 South 1550 East, Warden Grove. I was on the committee that helped draft what you ended up. I can tell you there are a few things that have been added that surprised me because in our discussion, we decided they wouldn't fit. The AP addresses. The committee map was actually in favor of those things and we were told that they were practical and we couldn't do it. So in little bits, I assume that way. All these concerns were addressed. The one thing that wasn't addressed, I don't think anybody on the committee found anybody that opposed apartments. They felt like there were so many of them that ought to be illegal mod to have one. But just one thing that hasn't been mentioned greatly, it's kind of took over. Just one thing that hasn't been mentioned greatly, has kind of took over around, but, this becomes a great source of income for those that are going through a divorce, or riddles and widowers, and there are a lot of those. And then, none of us knowing, we're going to be caught in those situations. It helped me, it was the only way that I could get into a home. I was already paying a mortgage payment, and supporting my children. I literally was paying the mortgage support payment for my children to stay in the home with another. And so, having an apartment became essential for me. And the majority of them that we on the committee were aware of were the same thing. People needed a second income, so.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Art Brownlee, and I live at eight seventy-five South, fifteen hundred East. Um, I, I really, really appreciated the opening, the opening, say, philosophy orientation for accessory apartments. Shows a respect for the citizens of this city, and a compassion for people's needs. Uh, I wanted to just make some comments. So, um, one thing that's, one thing that's really bothered me is watching apartments in section. And I'm LDS, and I'm a church, and people in apartments are so lost, and so separated, so transitory and home teaching levels are so low, um, that, um, people are very separated from each other. I think, I think what, what you're doing here with accessory apartment, um, new ordinances, is going to help, is going to make Pleasant Grove a much more, um, community, more, and a family, more, um, and a city. I think it's, I think it's a very, very positive thing for the, uh, demo- demographics of the city. Um, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm a senior, and, uh, and I will absolutely need to have an apartment that, to help support us after I retire. And, um, I think the, I think as such, the aging, you know, that, that will make it possible for me to stay in Pleasant Grove. And I think the aging community contributes strength to the, to the whole, to the whole city. I think it makes a much healthier, um, environment, um, and, you know, there's a lot of knowledge, you know, commitment, a lot of service that, that, you know, that we provide and do provide, and wisdom. And, uh, so, that's basically my opinion.
Thank you, Ken. Any other remarks? Anyone else? Go ahead.
I'll, Scott Scholl, two thirteen North Eight Hundred, Pleasant Grove. I'll represent the seller to all of her, so to speak. My wife and I live in a basement apartment. Um, granted, it's my mother-in-law's, so we're exempt as currently, uh, uh, classified, so to speak. But we pay her mortgage, basically. She's been forced into retirement from BYU after twenty years, just three or four years ago. Lost her husband over the summer, so she's lost half of her income. So, to several points that have been made, um, we're making her mortgage payment, and when we move out on our own within the next year or so, hopefully, someone else will need to step in and, and make that payment for her, until we can convince her to sell that out, which isn't happening anytime soon. But another question I had, the, the different addresses, the A and B. We looked into that at one point with the post office, and they said the only way to do that is to have separate utilities. The only way to have separate utilities is to have an additional unit, right? How is that being addressed?
I think that this will change that, because this is, this is the way that the city is going to address it.
So it's a city, not a post office ordinance or federal regulation?
I think, I think it is, it's this, it's the city, and see, the city, I, I mean, in the past, they've looked at that, and with the, with like the fourplex or duplex, they're looking at it based on, "Show me your, show me your bill," you know, "Show me your water and your gas bill." When this becomes, if the code changes to where this becomes the new code, then this is going to be the way that, I mean, obviously, it'll be a change from post office.
I think it'd be a good one, but... So we could go to the post office and say, "Two thirteen A, two thirteen B," but still have one utility bill that we split out however we want.
I'm sure it's going to take a little while for them to get there. Yeah, I think the post office does not assign addresses to the city, because, I assign addresses. I tell, I tell the post office, "This is the address for..."
Right, no.
So, commercial property is not unusual for somebody to have a space that they have a tenant in, and they have ten thousand square feet. That tenant moves, and now I have three tenants, and they only want three thousand square feet. And so, where I have an address, and I have A, perhaps, now I need A, B, and C. So I just simply let the post office know that this property now has three addresses, they need three mailboxes, there may be some costs to be involved in that. But the city makes the determination that this is what the address is. And that was one of the things that we considered when we said, "Let's make it so that addresses are separate." The other thing that we're concerned about is we talked to the fire department, the police department, trying to answer some questions that I said I wasn't going to do, but, um, but it, it is, is that they've responded to, to emergencies in different places, and not known that there was an accessory apartment. So they're knocking on all upstairs doors, and they don't know that somebody's had a heart attack in the basement. And so, the, the idea behind the different addressing is designed to help them understand where they're going to, what they're responding to, so.
My, my other concern slash comment, when the house was built, it was built with that in mind, to have family in the basement at all times, and trying to accommodate the parking issue. So we did a, well, you know, we did a little driveway off to the side, um, and developers, whoever, I don't know who, that specifically kind of chewed, chewed my in-laws out for building a driveway and trying to do that. In fact, they dug up half of what the asphalt was already, um, I don't know if it was planned or whatever, but I guess to, to the parking issue, that would be my other concern, is how that's being addressed. But again, in your, in your, I'll sit down, and in your, in your quest, in the answer period, you can address that.
Okay. Any else? Well, that's it, so.
How long time last time, we need to go longer. I had Rich Warburton, I live, uh, ten twenty-five B's, one hundred and one. Do have a mother-in-law's apartment in there, and I, I did set it up for that, registered with the city, when I was asked to do, and, um, have my mother-in-law in there, for goodness, but she's not going to listen to that, so. But I, I left it vacant for when I first moved in, and the only thing that spurred a, a renter was somebody was in, that was in need, and, um, there was no, no rent, there was no gather for that. But it's, but it's turned into a good thing that I think has helped somebody. Got some young students, and I'm on there, the third one's in there, and, um, I, I think it's been a good thing for that. But, the, the rules and regulations that's put here, um, I agree with most of them. My question is, uh, what, and maybe it's up above, but what would you do if somebody didn't conform to those? I see one thousand dollar fine if, or could be, if they don't register within that first two years, but just a question to read through that, just under, or have you, if somebody would come?
Thank you. Well, any, any more before we close the public remarks section, and it's down and start responding? You know, when we're going to try to answer some of these questions, I think it's probably fair for you to say, "Okay, I'm still not clear on that. Um, we're not going to completely shut it down, but we don't have to come back up and bring up any more concerns as of now, if you're all right with that." Okay, um, why don't we have Ken respond to you to begin with, Rich, as far as that goes?
Um, the non-conformity issue?
After the, after they've got the two-year period, and if you're still not in, in conforming, and your neighbor says, "These guys have an apartment," is it registered, because they're complaining? Say, what happens then?
It wouldn't be any different, really, than what it is right now. So we have, and, and this is just a clarification for those people who think, "Oh, by adding all these regulations on, then you're, you're doing something different. You're, you're making it more difficult for us to have an apartment." Well, I don't know if that's capable, it's currently, the code doesn't permit them, period. And, uh, we, we can and have enforced issues where someone has an accessory apartment and, and had to shut it down. Now, that hasn't had, happened very often, especially not recently, because we've been in this process of reviewing. So we've been a little bit more tolerant as far as enforcement is concerned. However, it is my opinion that should we not approve this ordinance, we may get into a discussion of how we shall enforce the current situation more clearly than what we have been, because we've kind of been in limbo right now. So we might, uh, discuss further how we might crack down on apartments that are illegal, which is basically all accessory apartments in Pleasant Grove right now, almost, are almost all, are illegal, because they have not been approved by the city, unless they were approved under a previous code, uh, or in a zone which currently allows it, such as the downtown building zone. Otherwise, if you're a regular, single-family neighbor in a zone, and your house is built after nineteen eighty-five, and you have an accessory apartment, it's not permitted by the city. So we could actually get a lot more strict and cause a lot more problems in the community by shutting down tons of accessory apartments. So what we're trying to do is knock that, to, to provide a, a method whereby these apartments that have not been recognized as being legal by the city can now be permitted. So we can't just say willy-nilly, it doesn't matter, we don't care how you do it, we don't care if they're safe, we don't care if you have six apartments in your basement, we don't care if there's cars already in your place, we don't care if you have a second entrance, or whatever. Um, yeah, you might call that infringing on property rights, but I say it's, it's important to, uh...
Balance.
Like you said, balance. And so, I think what the city is doing now is a responsible action, uh, to not keep our head in the sand any longer, that, uh, we, we know they're out there, but we're not going to do anything about it. We, we need to provide a method whereby they can be considered illegal and permitted. So, if they do not comply, then we're going to do all we can to send a message out there to everybody that we're aware of that has apartments, and try to get the message out that this is what we need to do, and they still will not conform, then, uh, there will be some enforcement that will have to occur. And so, uh, ultimately, that could be a fine, it would be something that possibly could go to court. The judge would determine how to handle it at that point, but there will be some enforcement, uh, that...
Some cities that we've looked at, what they've done is if it, they, they, if you're in a zone that allows for an accessory apartment, but say you haven't gone and registered it and everything, some of these cities will say, "You have a certain amount of time to bring that into compliance." And, and then they expect it. If, if you don't, in some of these cities, they will oversee the removal of the kitchen from the accessory apartment you have. So, they, they come and take it out, so. Yeah, we'll get it on there? Yeah.
When I built my house, it was after I had to be registered, I registered it with a mother-in-law apartment. So, it's registered that way, so if there's going to be, of course, a coming play, I mean, do you want to say it again?
Uh, well, yes, uh, so anything that wants to be, uh, or any property owner that would like to use their mother-in-law apartment. So the difference being, it could be, basically constructed the same way, but what we have the property to do is sign a second kitchen affidavit, which basically needs to be notarized, stating that this is not to be used as a rental unit. It is for family purposes, so that other family members, it could be your mother-in-law, it could be your, you know, your kids or whatever, but they can use that, as long as you are stating legally, notarized, that you are not using this for, uh, an apartment to be rented to someone else. So, you've got that permission, you don't have the permission to be able to rent it to somebody else. So yes, you would need to register your mother-in-law apartment to be an accessory apartment as well.
Okay, um, let's see, what else we have?
Do you have a question? Do you have any, any questions?
I, you know what? One of the reasons that we follow the procedure that we do here is so that we can get a good record of this, so that in, in the future, somebody wants to, to be able to go back and read what happened during this meeting. And you'll find the last thing that we do here is we're going to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. So we go through and we say, "All of us have, have received those, um, they've been typed up, and, and we've reviewed them to make sure that they're right." The, the problem with a discussion like this is how do we know who said what? Because it's being recorded, but Linda doesn't always know who you are, or what your name is. And that's why, that's why we're doing it this way. So, if, if we can, let's do it this way to begin with. Let's go ahead, and we'll go through, and we'll see if we can cover any of the other questions that, um, that, that have been posed, or the concerns have been brought up as best we can. And then let's open it back up just for a minute again, and we'll have you come and, and address us from the podium, and give us your name and your address again, so we have that on record. So, let's go down this hill, click.
Um, okay, I guess I have a question, huh?
Yes, you do.
Somehow they can't be described?
Described. What is called a secretary?
I've been called much worse. So, um, let's see, okay, so, I think one of the biggest ones, it was the actual enforcement. I think people, some people wanted to know, I understand Ken says the idea is to enforce it, but some people might, might have wanted some specific, and do we actually have the means to enforce it? And what is the city going to do to, are we going to hire more people? Is it feasible to do a staff as-is, is it going to create more?
Well, I still think it's going to only be complaint-based. That's, that's the truth, we're not going to send the Gestapo out. If your neighbor complains about it, then about, about a use, that what they're going to do is they're going to call up, and they're going to say, "I've either got a noise disturbance that I've got to complain about, or is my, are they, do they have a legal accessory apartment, because somebody's living over there with them?" And, and that's the way we're going to do it, because we're not going to send a police scene coward out to come and do that.
Okay. So, so since this is, is this discussion time as well?
For us.
For us, right? We close up the, okay, so, let me play the devil's advocate here then, right? So, so we're, we're, we're going to rely on neighbors, and is there a public registry? Or is it just a phone call saying, "Hey, kind of find out whether my neighbor's in compliance or not?" Because right now, as, as we've heard from testimony, this is already happening all over the place. So are we just going to get in it, are you going to get in a day with a phone call saying, "Hey, I just don't like this neighbor, I want to know if they are or they aren't," or, "Yeah, I'm really concerned over traffic," you know?
Well, I, I suppose we're just going to have to take it as a test and see what the need might be. But we're, we're anticipating that with current staff, we are going to be able to handle the level of complaints that may come in. Uh, that may or may not be correct, but, um, we have received many phone calls over the years, not complaining, neighbors complaining on each other, but just inquiries as to, "Well, are accessory apartments legal?" Or, "I've, I've got one, can we do this?" And we say, "No, you can't," and they say, "Oh, okay, well..."
You didn't hear from me.
Yeah, I did. So, so unless there's been a, a strong concern or complaint, the city hasn't done anything about that.
Have there been a demised complaint over the years?
No.
And a lot of phone calls done?
No.
Um, the way Orem City does it is, Orem has all of the legally registered accessory apartments on its website, just by address, and so you can look it up by, I believe, by zip code and by address. So you can look them up, and you can look up, and you say, "Oh, what do you know? My next door neighbor has a legal accessory apartment," and it's okay.
And, and we may do that, it would be a matter of public record.
Yeah, well, and that's part of it, like, they have two years to register.
Yeah, so we have a little time to create the process.
Yeah, we'll be building up that registry.
Next one.
Sorry, I have one other comment to add to that. It's just, um, also, having these guidelines for the accessory apartments, also... It's just, also, having these guidelines for the accessory apartments also, it gives the rights to the neighbors, right? It holds people accountable, so if they're, you know, previously, they weren't allowed, right? So then they're not, you know, they're not compliant in that regard. But, you know, if there's, it gives specific kind of violations to people.
Well, I think, I mean, the way they designed this is that now if your neighbor has an accessory apartment and it's not being managed correctly, maybe it doesn't have enough parking or something, now you can say, hey, city, my neighbor has an accessory apartment, and it doesn't wreck his whole world, right? So now they're not going to come and shut him down and everything. They're going to come and say, are you in compliance with the ordinance or not? And you can correct it that way without knowing that you could potentially put somebody out of their home, which I think is a much better way to deal with this, so.
And it's less, like, as far as parking goes, it's less subjective, right? Like, well, this neighbor feels like they have too many cars, and this, no, I don't think we have too many cars. So this gives that, that kind of guideline to say.
Needs two more spaces, period, that's it.
Yeah.
I can argue with anything like that.
Since they're okay, you have to test it or you have to fix it, so.
And along those lines, we can address Mr. Scholl's question about, I think he had a question about the driveway and what happened. Just, I guess we don't know the specifics of that, but does anybody have any input on the separate driveway and parking? What if there's a house that it's not feasible to put a driveway in or something like that?
I think what he was saying is that, he was saying that nobody respected the existing and added parking that was added because they said it was illegal. Well, and what's happened in the past, unfortunately, is going to be the past. This is going forward from here. And I think, I mean, we, I'll tell you, we argued about parking a lot for probably hours. And so we came up with, what we came up with as a compromise, where we went back and forth and we said, one space and two spaces and no spaces. We don't need any additional spaces. And we finally came down on elbow, and a couple of times, you know, we came down to, it's been the right, the best thing, so.
Anything else?
Sorry, I'm going to, I won't, I don't know. You can say it. So, you know, I understand that, I do value people's property rights as well, and also the need, you know, I do understand that there are people, you know, as you hit retirement or circumstances change in your life, that you, you know, having an accessory apartment and having that extra income, I completely agree with that. I also feel that in Pleasant Grove, we have, speaking too personally maybe, but there's a lot of different housing options. There's apartments, there's condos, multifamily, and single-family. There's a wide variety. And, you know, part of this ordinance is, it's for the benefit of everybody that lives here and to not overcrowd neighborhoods. You don't, you know, you don't want to have an accessory apartment in every home in a neighborhood. That just, you know, anyway, so if you, you know, if there isn't room for the parking or if the guidelines can't be met, then it doesn't, the home doesn't qualify to have an accessory apartment. Not all of them do.
And I don't think it has ever been intended to create a situation whereby every single home in Pleasant Grove would be able to have an accessory apartment. It's just that's not practical. There are homes and lots that just, this simply will not work.
Obviously, if you're out in the RR zone and you've got a full acre and you can build a separate little building in the back, if you could build a shed back there or a barn back there, you'd probably have an apartment back there, so. Okay with that.
We have this question for your name, just with the conflict with other ordinances that you.
Yeah, there's, I, hey, I think Michelle Richards did.
Yeah.
No, it was Michelle Slade.
Yeah, yeah.
The referencing of ordinance in the other.
Well, that's one, but what about conflicts with other ordinances, I guess?
Well, I think that was something that Royce has done, has done through, and that's why, to begin with, you read this as amending sections 10.6.2 and 10.9.8 is because there are a lot of different places where we have to modify snippets of our code in different places to allow this use in multiple zones. So if we run into a conflict and every once in a while, as a city, as a planning commission, Royce will run into something where there is something that's not clear, or in a zone, something happened where it's like, wait a second, how did that sneak in? Because we've copied it from someplace else or whatever. And we spend some time with code maintenance like that, because it's not always completely congruent. So as soon as, whenever Roy sees that, or Ken sees that, he brings it to us and we change the code and fix it. So that's okay.
I think those were the main questions.
Can we look up the code?
Why don't we open it back up for a minute? Because I think we tried to answer everything. And have you stepped back up here, Stephen, and give us your name? Yeah, yeah, let's remember not to repeat what's already been addressed. New comments?
Yes. Look on me up, there is. Is that online? Is that something that we can look up and reference?
Let me ask Royce. Our proposed code, do we have it?
Is that something that everybody in the room can go and book it?
Where is it where people can?
Is it on the city website? Can you go write them? Yeah, where is it?
Did we get this meeting uploaded? So, yeah, it would be under planning in the community development section of the city website.
We might want six more of those ones.
Another comment.
Just a second. Isn't the, is all staff reports listed on the website under staff report emails?
Yes.
So if you go to the, yeah, you go to the website and you go under where all the minutes and everything else, there's a section called staff reports. If you click on that, it will give you staff reports for city council, for planning commissions. I'm not sure about board of adjustments, but in the main committees, we all get staff reports, which is what we have right here, and the ordinance. And so you will know exactly what kind of information that we receive before we get a meeting. So those are available online. So if you can go there, you can pull up all our staff reports and know exactly.
And this goes before the city commission, assuming that a city council, assuming that some group might, then public input caused change to being proposed there could.
It could, it's a different committee.
Yeah, we.
We hope we do, we make our recommendations, the city council has the final say.
Yeah, we've just been asked, I mean, they kind of tasked us, they said this is a zoning thing, so you guys.
But public input that might could cause it to be qualified.
The comment, you know, we are modifying single-family residences. If there's a family in there with children, they're not going to have space to rent. This is, you know, when you get a single person buying a home, which is rare, or a retired couple, or once again divorced or widowed or something, but. But it's your own home, you're going to be a little bit more picky about who is there and what is going on. It's not going to be a duplex situation.
That's why we felt that that was one of those things that's really important, that Royce actually made us a picture for. Is that it has to be owner-occupied. We don't want duplexes all over the place. This is a different living situation if, I mean, the parties are going to be a little bit lower key if the owner still lives in the house, so.
Excuse me, my name again, on now. You know, I hope you keep in mind, there's a lot of nice ideas that I don't worry. I'm going to maintain the thing. You're not going to be able to equitably enforce this kind of an ordinance. You know, you're going to have to ask somebody staff, I mean, number one, you're going to communicate, who's going to monitor every house that sells every lease? And notify them of these ordinances when they have to comply.
Well, nobody is. That's.
That's what I'm saying. So if you're going to be complaint-oriented, you're going to take and create a very negative atmosphere. Okay? Jennifer is my next-door neighbor, all right? I like Jennifer, who would she likes me? You know, but if she complained about me, how am I going to feel about her?
Oh, I would feel really, yeah.
Okay. Now, you talk about so many different regulations pertaining to different things like this. Okay, you've mentioned my nephew Randy, all right? He grew up in a single-family house. He's number three of 11 kids, all right?
Oh, I sold a house with you before. I never sold a house with you. I sure did. I can remember where it was. It was down in Orem, down off the edge of a hill there, old by the new.
The one on Center Street.
Yeah, we said that about it.
For rental. You know, if you speak about that house in particular, okay? And you can picture it, it's on a highway, all right? Five-bedroom house, okay? Close to you. What would be a natural thing to put in there because of being a, I put in some students. And guess what? City with their good idea, they evicted my tenants because they were not related, you know? The students, it was cheap rent for them, it was good for them, everything was positive, until one girl that wanted to be in there, the other girls didn't want her in there, she complained. Okay? It created a problem for a lot of people. That's what I'm saying. If this is complaint-oriented, it's going to create a lot of animosity. It's not enforceable unless you have a lot of people. It's just going to be an unenforceable nightmare.
Vaughn, I think we all understand and recognize that that is one of the issues. Jennifer spoke to that extensively when we've been talking about this, actually. And I know that she had a lot of influence with taking a lot of this down. But it's like I mentioned before, is that as it stands, if you know that the nuclear option is the only option with your neighbor, so you know your neighbor has an accessory apartment and it's bugging you and it's bothering you and it's infringing on your quiet enjoyment of your property, and you know, if you say something, you like them, but boy, it's bugging you. You know that the only recourse right now is to quietly complain to the city and have the city come and take that use away from them, which might mean that they move. I don't think there's a perfect solution to this. But I think this is better than what we have now. And that's what we're trying to do, is trying to make it as perfect as we can. We acknowledge that it is not going to address every problem in every situation every time. But we are not all in complete agreement on every bit of this code. We worked it out and we all have different minds and different ideas. And we came up with what we feel based on experience that we do have, and that's pretty varied. I mean, you know, down, you know, we got Realtors.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about me.
No, well, we do have people that live out in high density, live in very close proximity to their neighbors and have different ideas about parking than some of the rest of us. So that was about you. But we, we've tried to put, I mean, we've been tasked with this from the city council, and we've put our best foot forward, and we've taken it very seriously and spent a lot of time on it, trying to get it as close as we can to what we would be willing to live with within our own community, which is that we all live here. And, I mean, you're making some good points. But it's one of those things where it's like, I don't know if there's like a perfect situation.
Yeah, and there's so many different personality types. Some people will go right to the person and want to address it and work it out, and other people don't want confrontation, and they'll call the police and it, or make anonymous complaints. So this just really.
And he just calls the police every day.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Don't call me.
You know, to me, you'd be one of those that I would have absolutely no respect for.
What's that?
Because you would be one of those if you did this on the face.
If she really did that, she doesn't.
I would have no respect for you, okay? Because you're not personified, you don't have nothing.
That's not like what's at issue right now.
I don't understand, because a lot of times, people don't understand what's going on.
No, no, but they understand how it's affecting them. And so the idea is that, yes, we're all supposed to be accountable for ourselves and be, you know, respectful to our neighbors. Yeah, we have our properties and we should be able to do what we want, but you can't infringe when it affects other people. So this just, these are guidelines that help protect the owners as well as neighbors.
Yeah, well, I understand, I think it's going to be very divisive, because if people can't communicate with their neighbors, or you're crazy, there's going to be a problem.
Right, and that's, that's.
We also have to recognize that the current situation is divisive and that there's a problem to.
Well, it's probably more divisive because of the anonymous complaints and stuff like that, so people working together. I mean, like the letter that I was talking about earlier.
Yeah.
Okay? Yeah, I went down to check things out because I care about my properties.
Yeah.
But it was bothersome to me that somebody complained anonymously without having the information, the correct information. They complained to me, they complained to the city, you know, where the property was, and to the police department, and it was totally unfounded.
Yeah.
Okay? And there's no way of that going back to them and saying, I'm sorry, but you were wrong. So they're going to sit there and stew thinking that they were right when they don't.
Right.
And so all it's going to create is bad feelings, okay? How does my tenant feel about all of their neighbors now?
Yeah.
Let me just address this for just a second. The reality of what you're stating is, you know, the issue that we're dealing with tonight is not whether somebody complains anonymously or to somebody's face, or calls staff, or calls the police. That's really not the issue we're dealing with. We're talking about how somebody notified somebody. It sounds like you've got some, it's bad taste in your mouth from this last episode, but really not dealing with that here in this meeting, to be honest with you.
That just adds to the bad taste.
If you'll let me finish.
I'm opposed, I'm opposed.
If you'll let me finish, I've let you speak, and so if you'll let me speak, I'd appreciate it. I just am trying to get to my point here. What's already happening is people have accessory apartments right now. The city is already getting calls or anonymous letters or tips or whatever from people that have accessory apartments. It's already occurring, okay? And so in criminal law, ignorance is no defense to the law. You can never stand before a judge and say, Judge, I didn't know this law existed even though I broke it, okay? And so your argument about your tenants getting evicted and how upset you were because they had one extra girl or something like that, wouldn't it be better if they knew? I mean, there's a counter argument there, right? If they knew what the law was, if they knew what the regulations were, then they would know whether they were in compliance or not. It wouldn't be a surprise to you or to them. They would know there's, you know, we have it drawn out. You're either in compliance or you're not. And so I guess my point with the complaints, and I'm not trying to stir up the complaint you received, it sounds like that wasn't very fair to you, but I think the complaints are already occurring. But I don't see how they're going to increase now that we actually have uniformity and a lot of it now. That was my point, you're welcome to respond if you'd like.
Well, I'm just saying, the whole idea, a lot of ideas are nice ideas, but unless you can uniformly enforce it, it's not a good idea. And like I said, this is not something that can be, and you talk about, you know, uniform, yeah. By the norm about that I couldn't, you know, do that, fine, because I don't want to fight students anymore. But at the same time, you know, that's what I'm saying earlier, with this kind of an ordinance, every time property sells, are you going to send them out of things? And this is a requirement, which you have to do all the time.
You know, you've been in the business in Provo, it's a misdemeanor on the Realtors' part if they don't disclose the zoning, so.
And I won't even buy a property in Provo because of that.
I understand, I'm not saying that I agree with that either. I, maybe we should just agree that this is a better bad situation than what we have currently.
Or agree, disagree.
Rather they not be allowed at all? That's where we're at.
We're not, it's going to be imperfect, there's no question. But this is a better situation than what we've got now. That's why we addressed it, we've spent a lot of time trying to address it. You can make arguments that maybe we shouldn't have any zoning, or we shouldn't have any regulation as far as this goes at all. You can make those requirements. I don't think that, I mean, I think this is the best of what we can do. So we all, I think, I mean, while we don't all agree with each other about what is in there, we've come to a consensus, and I think we've spent a lot of time looking at this as a group, trying to come up with something that will work as well as possible for the city that we love, so.
I don't think it's gonna resolve.
Okay. The only way we'll know is to try it out and see.
I don't know if I'm just supposed to follow. Stanley once said thirty-five stop fifteen. I had a question on the compliance when somebody registers one. Is there going to be an inspection that is required, is somebody going to have to come to every apartment and inspect it?
Ken, we, we talked about this, and, and we, we actually, Commissioner Richards and, we could probably rest out a little bit what we've talked about.
Well, what, the way we, the way we wanted, you know, we talked about this in great detail, and some were thinking that we should enforce, you know, send an inspector out and, and, and charge a higher fee, you know, for that. And, uh, you know, we, we wanted to kinda keep the fee down, um, you know, I proposed nothing, but, you know, twenty-five dollars, I think, is processed in the paperwork here. Uh, but, uh, in essence, you're, that's your, your kind of, there's a, there's a list of, uh, almost, I don't know, hasn't been really developed yet, but like a checklist is what we envision, you know, as to what, you know, you have to make applies for. Yeah, that type of thing. And then you, you know, you, you fill out that form, you know, you shoot some pictures, and, you know, you picture your locations, where the units are, and then you file that with the city, and, uh, you sign, you know, uh, something saying, an affidavit saying that this is true and correct. And, uh, so if there is an issue, like a public safety issue, or, or a complaint, you know, a, a serious complaint, and the city had to check into that, they would go back to your application and look at all the things in here, then that could be questioned as to whether you answered that correctly, or if those, or, or, or if it was correct, you know, that type of thing. It could be, it could help you, or it could be against you too, depends on, you know, the accuracy of the statement that you made. And, uh, so that's, you know, one may never know whether you made an accurate statement until there was an issue. And so that's, that's how we, that's how we did it.
Again, we tried to balance it, you know, you take a picture, I mean, they'll, they'll have to end up with a specific criteria that we want, but take a picture of your newly marked address that says, clearly marks that this is, has, you know, whatever B unit, whatever B, and we were thinking smoke detectors, and a picture of the egress or the entrance to the apartment, so that we know that it, you know, that meets code, so it's safe to get in and out. And GFCIs by the, by the water in the, in the kitchen, and just a, you know, a few safety things, but, you know, we're, we're not going to send the building inspector out to your house like they do in, I mean, if you're gonna build a new structure in the backyard that you need a building permit for, yeah, of course they're gonna do that, but if, uh, you know, in, in most cases, we envision a process where you come self-report, you come take some pictures of these different things according to the checklist, and submit them with the application, we're trying to keep it simple for the city, and yet still kinda cover some bases, so.
That answers my question.
Thank you.
So, about ten years ago, when we bought our properties, I went through all of these processes with the city. I had power to an accessory apartment that wasn't hooked up, and I paid the fees, I had the inspection done, I had the license contractor good. And then when they came to turn the power on, they told me that I couldn't have it there. And I thought, I went through the whole process, I paid the city the fees, and then I was told that I couldn't have it, you know? And so, yeah, I had a little bit of the bad taste in my mouth. However, to hear that everybody else has had these apartments, and for ten years I followed the law that I was told. And so, yeah, it's kind of, kind of given me a little bit of a curve, yes, because I've launched ten years that I could have.
Well, you can go, you, you now got something, you can go down and say, okay, I meant this, I meant this, I meant this, I meant this.
So, yes, so now I can do it legally, okay, but I haven't done it, so everybody else did, so, anyway, thank you.
Anybody else? Any last going, going, okay, oh wait, hold on, one more, one more.
Sorry, I'm obviously just stepping in, but as, as I'm listening to this, I do have some questions regarding, you stated that the whole reason this has come up is because the city council asked you to look into it.
No, that's not the whole reason, but they know that, that's, that's where our responsibility is.
Okay, on the basis, on the basis of existing complaints, is that correct?
I, I think it's a combination of like.
Request, I'm, I'm just curious what the nature, I'm curious about the nature of the, of the complaints that were mentioned.
Uh, you, you've missed a lot of discussion, and we've asked, is this a common thing, are there a lot of complaints? They've responded, there's not that many complaints, but they've also responded that there's a whole bunch of people from the community that call and say, uh, what do we have to do to get our accessory apartment legalized, and, and are they okay, and are they not? We're, it, this isn't complaint driven so far, this is need driven, there's a need here that needs to be addressed. That's why it's being addressed. It's been halfway addressed for a long time, it's been ignored, there's been nods and winks, and, and people that have gone through hoops to get one, get them put in correctly, where they met all the building and zoning code, and, and, and went to that expense and haven't been able to use them, and there have been other people that have had three apartments in their house that never asked anybody about it. We just need to address it.
Okay, I, I was just curious about that, because I, I too get concerned about bureaucracy.
Yeah.
And, and whenever, you know, one new thing is created, it's a slippery slide to the next thing, and so, I, I, I do get concerned about having to do something when it may not be necessary.
This is one of those things where we're just trying to balance the situation. I, I mean, right now, for example, as we mentioned, if your neighbor has an accessory apartment, and they're bothering you because of parking, and your teenage son gets mad enough that he calls the city, instead of coming to you and you walk over and talk to the neighbor, then the solution that the city has right now for that little problem is to come and remove the use from the homeowner. That might not be what you even want.
Well, are there, what are the nuisance ordinances, the existing nuisance ordinances, are there not things that address those type of things without going to?
If you're in violation of, if you have an accessory apartment, it's illegal. And so, if they get a complaint, they take it away, that's it, we're fixing that. Okay, okay.
And, um, you know, like Mr. Moon said, you, years ago, right? I mean, this has been going on, it was, this, it's been about a year and a half that we've been actively looking at this, but there have been, um, committees and groups that have been looking and studying and proposing things for years. So there was a lot of information that we, that had been collected over the years, it's, it's been an ongoing discussion with the city, with, between citizens and city council and planning commission, it's been a mission for a long time.
Yep, it, it, really good.
That's, that's perfectly fair, like I said, I'm just, I'm just one that likes to keep government things as limited as possible.
I get it, thank you, thank you for, uh, your concern, comments. Okay, I think we'll close that, and, uh, bring it back up here, and do you guys have anything else from all this discussion that you think we ought to get on the record?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
Um, this process has been, um, pretty conflicted for me. Um, and so, we were, we were asked to take on this assignment, and, um, I did my best to cooperate and do my part in this assignment. And I probably had done a lot of the arguing, based on some decisions. Um, my whole opinion on this, um, the situation, is there are situations that exist right now that does not require these requirements and these regulations. And so it comes down to a rental, or basically somebody paying to use your space. Um, and I don't think, I don't think that they should be, you know, targeted or singled out just because they're trying to, and increase their, um, income, or to help cover their costs. And I've, and I've stated that multiple times. Um, and I am extremely for, uh, property rights, and I think that, like, some people have already said, and I've said it multiple times, people should be able to do what they want to, and so with regulations, I think less is more. Um, and so, this is the first time that I've actually got to represent myself and my personal opinion, and, and I get to vote on my personal stuff and my personal opinion, and I, I am conflicted, because right now, accessory apartments, as they're, exist, is not allowed by law, or by code. Uh, that is extremely frustrating for me. And the fact that this, um, ordinance of this code, I'm not okay with, I don't agree with it. Even though I, I did my part to participate and to balance it, and try to negotiate, and try to get it to the most, most friendly and the less regulated I could possibly get it to, I'm still not okay with this. So I will not be supporting this ordinance on the basis that I think that it should be allowed. And it should be allowed like a mother lonesome, you know, situation, my situation. I think that, you know, I don't even, I don't even think it should be registered. I just think it should just be allowed, and that people do with their property and their income, and their, and their financial situations, that they feel fit, that they need to survive and to continue their lifestyle, so that's where I stand, so.
Okay. Um, anybody else have anything to say?
Well, okay, I do have something to say. Um, no, I'm all for property rights too, and for people being able to do what they want to do, so long as they don't infringe on the rights of somebody else's rights to do what they want to do. So like, that you can't escape that, like, so that's my only.
My dad always used to hold the one man's freedom hands where another man's nose begins, now. I'm gonna ask if anybody has a, um, a motion, because we're gonna see if we can port this onto the city council. And Jennifer, I'm gonna say I appreciate you being a part of the process. It might not be ultimately what you personally are for or want, but I appreciate your input and trying to get it, I mean, this is, you know, we all have different opinions, and we all try to come up with something that we can all live with. If you can't live with what we actually came up with, I get that, um, it's not what I want completely either. Um, but it's enough for me to say, this is better than what we've got, and I'm not sure we're gonna have another shot at getting it any more perfect. Um, I think we can amend it over time, I think we'll run into more problems, and the way government works is we deal with that, and we say, you know what, this isn't working, and we try to deal with it at that time. But I think this one protects property rights of, of the individuals, and balances them with, with the, the quiet enjoyment part of property rights for the neighbors. So I, I think we've done the best we could, I'm proud of the job that we've done, all of us have done, including the input that you've given, so.
Can I say something, I made four emotions, I mean, just to, I don't wanna drag this down any longer, but I want, there's something that I think I would like to recommend to city council that I don't think we've really fully covered here, and if you guys disagree with me, I'd like to know, but we really don't have any, any due process established, right? So, so what happens if you do get fined, is it just a ticket, do you, is it actually, like you said, Provo, is it a class C misdemeanor? Is it an infraction, what's your due process rights to go, say, no, actually it wasn't compliance? I, I think that's something that the city council shouldn't consider, must, did I miss something, is that in there already?
I, I think that we should.
Include that in our recommendation.
I think we should, and I, I don't, see, I think part of that is that we've done our part of the job, and I think the due process end of it is more staff and city council.
So.
Right.
And he signed his mind, he handled the same line.
It says a lien in this paperwork.
Uh, uh, possibly, it may be a lien, including the possibility, if you read the verbiage there, it's not an absolute. So, so I think, uh, the recent discussion we had with city attorney was that, uh, she wasn't comfortable with that point anyway, in completely defining the due process, because there may be a lot of different options, and a lot of different scenarios that you don't wanna say it has to be this way, or it has to be that. So, I mean, you can make that recommendation, and city council may or may not go with something further, but I understand your concerns, but I think there was a, a balancing concern of how to deal.
Yeah, and I, and I'm sure city councils are already planning on doing that, I just, I didn't know if there was any other recommendation you guys could think of that, that we should throw in there for city council, even though we know that probably gonna.
I, I, you know, I don't, I mean, I think we should, should make that a part of the motion, that that has not specifically been addressed, and that may be something that staff and the city attorney and the city council can address, we're talking about property use here. That, that, we don't talk about that, that part of the regulation a, as much, but I, you know, I mean, I think if the, the city attorney will probably go and look at how it's dealt with in other cities, and go ahead and see if they can provide some input that way to the city council and come up with something, that's my guess.
Something to that idea to recommend that to the city council, just make sure they think about it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Anybody like to make a motion, has anybody prepared, take a stab at it? Okay?
I move the planning commission to recommend that the city council approve the request for Pleasant Grove City for a text amendment created in city code section ten dash fifteen, dash forty-seven, and then in sections ten dash six, dash two, definitions, ten dash nine A, dash two, permitted conditional accessory uses, ten dash nine D, dash two, permitted conditional, uh, conditional accessory uses, ten dash nine C, dash two, permitted conditional accessory uses, and ten dash fourteen, dash four, dash two, dash C, permitted proposed amendment would, would affect properties in A one.
You skipped one.
I skipped one.
Permitting conditional. Right after.
Okay, I skipped one, sorry. Uh, permitted conditional accessory uses, permitting accessory apartments in the Pleasant Grove City Code. The proposed amendment would affect properties in A one, RR, R one, and RM seven, Downtown Village in the Grove Mix Housing Sub District, that allows for accessory buildings and single family homes in the Pleasant Grove City Code. And include the recommendation that, uh, that the staff and city council, um, look at, um, a due pro, uh, uh, due process, process.
Due process.
Procedures.
Procedures, yeah. Okay, we've got a motion from Commissioner Richards, do you have a second?
One second.
A second from Commissioner Adams, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, uh, so that passes with one, um, what, negative vote? Um, okay, now we've got one more, thank you all for coming.
And again, this item is not completely approved here tonight, it's going forward to the city council on Tuesday. Meeting starts at six in this room.
And the public is welcome to.
Maybe a lot of input. They're, they're actually planning, just like we were planning, if it gets big enough, if there's enough people that want to, to give input that, you know, they're planning on, on moving it over to the rec center.
Yeah, as we were prepared tonight, so it depends on the size of the crowd.
Depends on how many people show up, so, thank you for being here, we've got like one or two more, go quick. Like, um, housekeeping issues that we gotta deal with, and, uh, the more opposed that you're walking, you're gonna step out if you want to at this point. Um, we'll go to item number nine, reviewing approval of minutes from October eighth, two thousand fifteen, or October twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, planning commission meetings.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve, um, the planning commission minutes for October eighth.
Okay, we've got a motion, um, are, are you guys running into something? Oh, oh, we got, we can't do it. We may have a motion.
Yeah.
So, on page four, item five? Four, I mean, eight? Four, item five?
October eight.
Oh, yeah, October eight, sorry. October five? This is, it's line item twenty-six, this was discussion on current city requirements for street approvals to be installed in connection with certain, certain project sites, and then it was through all of the discussion, and then on page five, um, line forty-one, the motion is for Commissioner Baptiste to move to approve the planning commission meeting minutes and report of actions on September tenth. So I don't know where our decision on item five went.
There was no decision on item five, it was just an item of discussion.
We didn't have to make a move, motion or anything.
Yeah, we were just talking.
It says it was discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, that's all I need to.
Okay, and, so we've got a motion from, um, Commissioner Baptiste, do you have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Richards, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the Pleasant Grove City planning commission minutes for October twenty.